Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for February 7th, 2023. My name is Carrie Martinak, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I will read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to ending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on July 16th, 2022. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed in the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To confirm, board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard. Please state the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Yeah.
Amy Pretzky?
Yeah.
Anthony Zaitin?
Yeah.
Millie Milton?
Yeah.
And Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yeah.
Fred Litchfield. Oh, Fred, we didn't hear you there.
Here.
Great. Okay, ground rules. For presenters or applicants, listen on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak show of application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to meet their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comment, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone, dial *9 to raise your hand in ways to be recognized by the Chair. Please note party and number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen in ways to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and address them only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for any comment. There is no executive session for this evening, so that concludes my announcements. And with that, we will get started with tonight's agenda. Um, before we get started, I do want to say that we have a really packed meeting tonight. So I'm going to try to run this as smoothly as possible. There's a lot to get through. So I'm going to kind of walk through the approach as we go through each hearing tonight. Also want to thank everybody and staff as well, Lori, Fred, everyone on the board for the effort to get all the materials. It was a monster effort tonight to get everything together. A lot of documents flying around up until today. And all that hard work is appreciated. So let's see, for the first item on the agenda, we have the continued public hearing for 79 Bartlett Street Site Plan Approval for a replacement of two existing athletic fields, a track, nine tennis courts, spectator seating, lighting, and construction of associated improvements at the athletic complex. So with that, we will invite the applicant, the team to come in and we'll get started there. So let's see, who do we have here? I know we just had, oh, um. I know we just had Kathy. There's Kathleen. Okay, we'll bring Kathleen in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Who else would you like to pull in?
Um, it should be, uh.
Oops, we can't hear you, Kathleen. We have, for some reason, you're mute here.
Here too. Am I good now?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you. Yeah.
Video, whoops, there we go. That was on and then I was off, so.
No problem. Okay, who, do you have others from your team that you want to bring in?
Um, Matt Kinland.
Oh, yeah, there's Matt. Hi, Matt.
And Greg, I don't know, um. Greg, is Keith on or is it just you tonight?
Uh, Keith is joining us as well.
Okay, all right.
Do you think Keith on there?
I think, I think that's it, other than, I don't know if Keith, um, there he is. Okay.
Okay, well, welcome. So why don't, for this particular hearing tonight, I know we talked before, we had some Planning Director had some comments. Um, there were some additional notes from her memo, and then it looks like you replied today with some comments on her memo. And we also have a, um, report we're waiting for. So why don't, um, that, your letter came back to us a little late today. So why don't you take some time to kind of maybe talk through your responses to what, where, where we are in terms of the Planning Director's comments and anything else remaining from our last one.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you and good evening, everybody. Um, yes, back, I guess it was February 2nd, we received Lori's second review on our, our comments, our response to comments which we had submitted. Um, and there were like four outstanding comments, the first being to provide additional data regarding, um, potential for carcinogens in our track as well as the tennis surfacing. And, um, we've provided updated MSDH, DS sheets for the various layers and such involved with that. So we're hoping that that addresses that comment. Um, the next comment was regards to, um, uh, some, some additional details on the light fixtures, which we also attached, as well as, um, some ADA, um, the addition of some ADA, um, ramp details and slope details to be added to the, um, to the plans. And I think that's, that's about it. We, we did provide two updated drawings and a detail sheet as well, um, to address that. And as you are aware, or just to make you aware that the, um, the school, Regional School District has, um, gone under contract with Weston and Sampson to do, to do their review of the, um, chemical components and such associated or potential associated with the, um, various turf components. And they're also going to be doing background soil sampling at the existing field, um, to see what, um, levels that maybe perhaps PFAS or such could be in the fields under present conditions. Um, and I think that's, um, where we're at. Um, and I'm, you know, hoping that that's the kind of last outstanding item that we anticipate to have in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and for all of the data sheets that came to us today, so there's a, that's about 105 pages here.
Yeah.
Is, is this something that the peer reviewer is looking at these data sheets? Or is this something we need to be reviewing? What, what is the anticipated next step for these data sheets?
Well, I know Lori had requested, um, the, the information. So I'm not sure Lori, if you had anticipated them to review it, or, um, most of them are what we refer to as, um, material data sheets, which is, you know, issued when a product is manufactured and such. And, um, I think pretty much, and Matt, you can correct me, but it, you know, that identifies, there's actually a spot on those sheets that says whether there's, um, carcinogens in, you know, involved with the product. And I believe they, they all say that there's not. Um, I think there's a couple that may be during installation. Um, you know, there's some fumes, um, when they put some of this down, but then, um, it, it's not once it's in place. So. So unfortunately, I didn't have sufficient time to review the submittals today. Um, however, I, um, did quickly look at a, a couple of them. I didn't look at the sheets that Kathleen is referring to. I know Fred typically looks at those sheets. Um, so Fred, I'm assuming that you'd feel comfortable reviewing them again and, uh, like Kathleen says, they do pretty much, um, tell you whether it's a concern or not on the sheet. So that probably will be sufficient information for the tennis courts and the track. What do you think, Fred? Not to put you on the spot.
Uh, no problem. I am happy to take a look at them and, um, I didn't get a chance today, but I will take a look at them. And we can chat about it and let you know if there's anything of concern, but, um, they're pretty standard. So I'll have to see what it looks like.
Perfect.
Okay, and anything that's outlined in red, is that something you want us to pay specific attention to or was that?
I believe we were just trying to help you zero in on the conclusion regarding the, um, the findings, you know, that's presented regarding carcinogens.
Okay, great. And then I see you attached a few updated plans here. Is this something you wanted to share and just walk through any notable changes since the last time we met or?
Um, we can, um, just get there.
So it starts at, I think, 103.
Yeah. Just trying to get to them. I don't know why I didn't have it up.
I also have it if you want me to share my screen, although you may want to.
I can, I can share. Okay. Matt, do you want to speak to these or you want me to do them?
Uh, yeah, I can speak to them.
Okay, all right. Can everybody see the drawing? Oh, hold on. Probably not. Now can everybody see the drawing?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so, um, if you can see right to, to the left here of the, of the field, um, we extended the new asphalt to extend all the way to the, uh, existing concessions and the proposed storage shed area. Um, that's what that, that shaded, the shading is referring to. Um, and we, we added a tactile, tactile warning strip, um, as, as required for any handicap ramps in that area where the cursor is, as well as at the five parking spaces, uh, handicap parking spaces, um, over, yep, to the left right there. And then we also, on the next sheet, uh, we have a grading plan that just, that just shows elevations, uh, just to confirm that we are ADA compliant. And then this detail sheet right here, detail number seven, um, shows the, uh, typical accessible curb ramp with the tactile warning strip. Um, it has the maximum and the preferred slopes and, as well as a level landing at the end of each of these ramps. And then we have the maximum cross slopes and the 5% maximum slope, um, as required by ADA for all walkways. And I added a note there just to make sure that everyone knows that it, it is for all walkways on the site.
The, um, the ADA compliance are also covered in our general grading notes as well to, for the contractor will need to comply with those requirements. Um, and then this detail just represents the, the, um, what's required, so.
Yeah, and that's pretty much it for, uh, that, that addresses at least two, two or three of the, uh, four comments that are outstanding.
Thank you for addressing those.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, do board members have, or do board members have any questions about responses to the memo? Recognizing you may not have had a chance to look through it, um, any immediate questions about the revisions or the memo?
I really didn't get a chance to look through it all, so.
Okay.
I don't want to ask questions that were already answered in it, so.
Okay. Um, anything from staff, any additional questions? Or comments?
No, they've done a really good job of addressing my concerns, so thank you for doing that.
You.
None for me.
Were you able to save that area we talked about before with the pavers, the new pavers?
We, we have, um, what we've done is we've dictated to the contractor, we noted that the bricks to be saved and set aside and, and reused, um, as much as possible. Um, so that, that'll be worked out as we, you know, go into final, but we will keep the bricks and the intention is to put back most of them.
Okay, great. Um, all right, if there are no other questions from the board or from staff, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up for public comments at this time. I know we received some emails as well that we can speak to. Um, if there are any public comments, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed to speak. Okay, first we have, um, G. Campbell, which I think may be George Campbell. George? If you can say your name and address.
All right, good evening. George Campbell. 38 Sunset Drive, Northborough.
Hi, welcome.
Um, thank you. Uh, I just had a couple, I had a couple of questions. I submitted a, a letter, uh, of, uh, comments. Uh, and first I want to say I absolutely support, uh, renovation of the high school athletic fields, um, including the tennis courts. I play tennis there, uh, with my family, so I absolutely understand. Uh, there's a lot of cracks in the courts that need to be fixed. Uh, absolutely support, uh, the track. Um, what I don't support is, uh, artificial turf on just really a number of levels, uh, for, for a number of reasons. Um, but the first question I have is, uh, who, who's responsible for, there's a, a website, uh, describing the, the proposed proposal. Who, who's responsible for that?
Um, is it the school run? I, what is, and is there a title to it? I think there's a complex website.
That's it, that's it. Yeah, I was just curious who, who, who prepared that? I was just curious, is that?
Who, does that come from?
I'd be happy to answer that question, so.
Go ahead.
We, we had, so hi, this is Greg Martin, our superintendent, so we have an athletic complex building committee. And one of the members on the committee who is a citizen, um, helped us establish the site. And the site is run by, um, one of the members of the committee, but it is school-sponsored.
Um, the reason I'm asking is, uh, there's a section on safety. Uh, and that section on safety, uh, references two articles. Um, you know, one of which is, is quite old, um, but both of those articles are, uh, by, um, Mr. Myers. And, uh, his, uh, research is sponsored by, um, the turf industry. Um, so it's, it's very selective assessment of safety. Um, and I just want to say that, uh, the NFL Players Association, um, in their contract negotiations, absent, because of injuries, absolutely does not want to play on artificial turf. Um, the US National Women's Soccer Team has also negotiated to play their games on grass. Um, and they're not alone. Uh, and my, my thinking is, there's really a lot of literature on injury. Um, and if those parties, if, if artificial turf is not good for those parties, I don't think it should be good for our, our players, our students. Uh, and, uh, you know, I know there's been, uh, articles on, on, you know, both sides, uh, injury, non-injury, but I think that, you, there is quite a lot of literature, um, which I certainly could share, uh, with the board on injury, uh, and abrasion with artificial turf.
Okay, great, thank you. And I know you shared some documents, um, that I actually had a couple of questions coming out of, so thank you. Uh, any other comments from you?
Um, I just really feel it's a really step in the wrong direction. I think any, uh, independent assessment of costs, uh, over 15 to 30 years, um, there is a lot of unknowns of, for disposal of material. Uh, you know, once it needs to be replaced, is it, will it be recycled today? If, is it recyclable material today? Maybe, but in 15 years, the market could absolutely change. Um, I think the polymer coating, uh, that's proposed, you know, certainly, uh, may be better than the, from rubber. But, uh, that also, the material proposed certainly could cause, uh, microplastics released into the environment. Uh, and I just feel that on so many levels, it's really a step in the wrong direction. Uh, these fields will create heat islands and considering, um, the state of the climate, I think it's really, it really stepped in the wrong direction, uh, for the town and, and the state.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other comments at this time?
I, I actually, oh, sorry, Amy. I had a few questions that I don't know if they were answered in, in the information that was provided. So I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at it. And if they were, just refer to that. Um, but I, I know that it was mentioned that demand exceeds available playing time and that some schools won't compete on our fields. But I didn't really see any data that was supporting those statements. And I think I'd like to see if you could provide some of the data that shows us that we weren't meeting demand, when we weren't meeting demand and what some of the, um, you, you know, what schools won't do it or was it weather related? You know, I just kind of want some data that supports what we're, what we're looking at. Um, so if that was in there, I, you know, I'll look forward to reading it. Um, and also, uh, did it have a cost analysis of grass versus turf over the course of years? It did have that because I think that was one of the questions that was previously asked.
We didn't provide a, a formal response, but, um, we, we do have a cost estimate comparison. And, um, the grass field, you know, it, keeping, um, in mind that, you know, a, a state-of-the-art grass field versus the turf field will still continue to have a subbase with drainage, um, piping and things, you know, very similar. And the, the cost difference that we have is, it's about $720,000 for a top-of-the-line grass field. And it's about a million dollars for a synthetic turf field. Um, but keep in mind that your maintenance cost per year for the grass fields, um, runs closer to $25,000 to $30,000, where a turf field is closer to $7,000 a year. So it, you know, it, it does even out eventually.
And the lifespans are about the same?
The grass field, the grass field, um, the turf fields, um, I think we had indicated can last, you know, anywhere from 12 to 14 years. Um, and that's the surface. That's not the base and all is fine. Um, a grass field, it all depends on, um, how often, well, first off, maintenance practices. If it's, you know, um, a, you know, highly maintained grass field, then obviously it can take more use. But, um, your average grass field can only take 250 hours of play, um, per year, at which time it needs to be rested and, and folks need to be off of it. And the problem that the schools have, and not just this school, and, you know, almost every town in Massachusetts, is there's just so many programs, if you, I know you talked about, uh, you know, the numbers and the usage. Um, you know, if you take, you know, freshman JV varsity, then you take girls, the boys, you know, lacrosse, soccer, you know, all those different sports and football and all of that. It, it just adds up a lot to be dispersed around, you know, a limited number of grass fields. And, and that's, you know, why the fields, you know, are, you know, in the condition that they are today because they just get overused and they're overcompacted.
But the amount of use really wouldn't change whether it's turf or grass? You're just saying that we have to rotate and can't use them all?
That, and it's, it's providing that, um, you know, the availability. And the, and the school, obviously, the school's intent also is to hopefully, because these fields can be used with the lights, you know, theoretically 24/7, um, and in bad weather and such, then you don't have, you know, rescheduling issues and cancellations and things like that. Um, it just gives them the opportunity to open these fields to other programs too, not just high school, but, you know, youth programs and such.
Mm-hmm. Um, Amy, Millie, is that it for you? Did you have something else there?
Um, yeah, that's it. I definitely want to take a look at what the material, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Amy, you have something?
My question is more of, um, a board question. As far as our purview, are we just looking at the site layout and we'll read the MSDS sheets and look at the carcinogens? But in the end, if there are no carcinogens shown, is it up to us to pick turf over grass? Or is all this information going to go to like the high school? Are you having meetings with the public and it's going to go to town meeting? Like, I'm not sure as a planning board if we're, our choice is turf versus grass. That's what I wanted to ask, maybe Lori or even the superintendent, like.
Well, also, we have Attorney Duneski on the phone, if you want me to bring him in too. But anyway, Lori, do you know that answer?
So of course, um, you know, what they're asking for is site plan review. So I would say that generally, as long as the submittal complies with the rules and regulations, the zoning bylaws, um, then, eh, you know, eh, pretty much would be approved. So it's not the use itself that you're approving outside of, uh, the one exception, of course, is, uh, it is within the groundwater protection overlay district. Um, but that has to do with the protection of the groundwater supply. Um, so, eh, you know, eh, there are specific findings that you have to make regarding the groundwater supply. But as long as you are able to say yes to those findings, then I would think that it would be your purview to approve it. And ultimately, town meeting would make the decision as to whether they're willing to pay for turf fields versus, um, a grass field. Uh, Fred, certainly correct me if you feel differently and, uh, town council is there as well. Uh, so I, I certainly, um, won't be upset if you have a contrary opinion.
Um, well, I don't, I don't know about, I can't speak for Attorney Duneski, but I don't. I think that you and I have talked about it before and you hit it pretty much on the head. As long as the criteria and the special permit can be granted in the groundwater area, then, um, it really should be up to the voters in the town to decide if they want to do it for financial or, uh, safety issues, not groundwater.
And this is David Duneski, uh, under the site plan review and under, um, any of the other regulatory provisions we've been discussing. I wouldn't see the choice of surface as being, uh, a planning board decision. So, uh, one way of just saying I concur with, uh, what both Lori and Fred have said.
Um, out of curiosity, um, Superintendent Martino, did you hold a public, or not a public hearing? Yeah, feedback session was that last night with parents? Any like consistent theme that you heard or would you be able to share?
Yeah, so we did hold a community forum last night. We've also had this on our, uh, Regional School Committee Agenda as a topic for discussion, um, for several, many meetings. I think that, um, I would characterize the questions that we received, um, as more about supporting the overall project. Um, I did have a conversation with one person who requested that one of the fields, one of the multipurpose fields be grass versus turf. Um, that was the only question that, that I received around turf versus grass.
Okay, so, um, the, the one thing that I did see in, just in terms of cost, and I suppose this will be up to the voters either way, was, um, the articles that, uh, Mr. Campbell sent over. It was the, um, NFL Women's Soccer and the Injury Report. It did bring up some different, um, things that have come up with the towns who have pursued turf, with the maintenance cost per year, um, having to water it, the rug repairs. Um, and then, of course, the whole thing about injuries, even heat injuries. I was wondering, I mentioned it to the town planner. It would be interesting to hear from other schools if, like, what their experience is. Have they thought maintenance would be low, but it was actually much more than they thought? Or did they, did it rip? But is the rug ripped five years down the road? I don't know if that's useful for other, this board to know if we're not tasked with making that choice, but it may be something. I imagine voters would be curious, what is the, of all the towns around us, I think there are a couple. What towns around us have turf now? Does Westboro?
Yeah, there's, I think we are, uh, one of two schools in our mid-watch league that have grass fields. Um, the remaining, um, communities have turf fields. So our athletes and our, our, you know, student athletes are playing primarily on turf fields when traveling to away games at this point.
And have we heard any feedback from the other schools or I suppose it didn't?
No, I mean, I think that the, you know, the feedback that I've heard from superintendents and athletic directors and principals is really the ability to extend. The feedback that I've heard from superintendents and athletic directors and principals is really the ability to extend seasons. The limitation of grass fields in New England, um. Being able to expand access to our fields to community groups, um, youth sports, um, and our. Student athletes is really important, and I think. Schools have benefited from that, I'll give you an example, our field hockey team, for example, has to travel to um, play its game, so. The field hockey team would be able to play um. On site at Algonquin with with these these fields.
And why can't they now?
There's just not not a field for them to play on.
Um, the. Well, then I guess for us, what we need to consider is the safety, so this whole report they're receiving will really talk about the safety of it, and that's where I guess we come into play, is just considering. Um, what are the implications for from a safety perspective? Um, we did receive another. A letter today, it looks like, I don't know if that person's in the audience, I don't see. Um, Kevin, Kevin Dougherty, if you're in the audience and you want to speak to your letter, you can, or else I can. Not necessarily if he's in the audience, okay, so we did receive another letter today from um, Kevin Dougherty, I don't have his address in this letter. Um, but just asking for. Let's see. Um, any sort of information around the twelve hundred seat venue? Um, is that something, was a smaller venue considered, is that based on current attend, current average attendance, or how did we come up with? Twelve hundred for the seat, number of seats?
Um. Mr. Dougherty was at our public forum last night and and actually asked the same question. Um, but and and I will reply, um, the number of seats is it's actually just a few more than what we had previously. Um, and the reason it's a little bit bigger is because we will now be upgrading the stands. To accommodate handicap, there's actually spaces for handicap. Folks, wheelchairs will will have ramps, there's that literally cutouts for people with wheelchairs. As well as a companion with them, like there's special designated areas. Um, and we also are providing the lift, um, so, um, again, um. Disabled can get up to the press box and perhaps, you know, work the scoring or something along those lines, which are not available today. Um, so, you know, working with the school, one of the other things that. Controlled the number of seating is related to the number of restrooms and the plumbing code. And um. We are able to, um, right now, the um. The school does not have meet the plumbing code for um, in regards to the number of seats to the number of um, restrooms that are required. So, um, we are also working on um, upgrading the existing amenities building. Um, to provide those additional restrooms and that that number was kind of dictating. Um, also, you know, how many seats we could um, have in the in the grandstands.
Okay, um, isn't another part is just a matter, are there any? Are there any alternative proposals that were considered? Um. Was there an RFI or alternative proposals? I don't know if that was already asked, but is that something?
Yeah, so.
Oops, so we can't hear you there.
Yes, so this work actually started in two thousand thirteen and fourteen. The Athletic Boosters Club um, partnered with a school district in two thousand and fourteen uh, with Gail Associates. And does it did, uh, conducted a feasibility study. Um, and did some initial initial schematic design. Um. Nothing came, you know, nothing came to fruition as a result of that work. Um, when taking this topic back up as a school district. Um, we did again partner with boosters and we actually were able to capitalize on the booster's investment with Gail Associates. Um, and we continued the partnership, we also. Research firms, um, talked to local school districts, um, and and Gail Associates came highly regarded in terms of. Um, design, engineering, specifically around athletic complexes.
Okay, and then the last one was just in regards to, um, you know, as we remove all the existing scoreboards and signs. Um, that reflect the sort of former. Algonquin, I guess mascot or um, history, is there any consideration for a monument in the complex? I didn't see one in the site plan necessarily, so I don't believe that to be the case, but anything?
No, at this time, there's nothing in the site plan that would. Um, provide um, any acknowledgement of the past. Um, mascot for Algonquin Regional High School, however, the high school is working on kind of history of. Um, the Algonquin, um, and impact. Algonquin has had on this area in this region, and so that will be um. An inside display case of Algonquin Regional High School. But there would be nothing to prohibit prohibit us in the future to uh, do something outside. Potentially maybe on one of the exterior walls of the amenities building. But nothing in the site plan at this time.
Okay. All right, I think that was all the feedback we had coming from the public, and I don't see any further public comments here, oh Lori, you had something?
Well, we just got a very, very late email from uh, Bob Frederico. Uh, so it was a an attachment to an email. He had some concerns about. Exterior lighting. Um, yeah, kind of scoreboard references. Clamping for the scoreboards and bleachers. Uh, the storage building, um. Having to do with structures over eight feet in in height need uh, foundation footing plans. The amphitheater needs to be two thousand fifteen IBC requirements. And then the need for stamped uh, engineered drawings for retaining walls over four feet in height, so. I did email that to you Kathleen right before the meeting, but.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll address it, I know some of it's in the code references, um. And um. You know, we will, we will be provided with stamp, we will provide, but we will be provided as well with stamp plans for the specific foundations and all of that as part of our our bid documentation and such, so. Um, we should, we should have all of those covered.
Okay, and Lori, when you have a chance, I don't know if that came to the planning board as well. Maybe it did, I some still, I have a slew of emails here.
Yeah, I think I sent it, you know, like ten minutes before the meeting started, so, bizarre, nobody has seen it as of.
Okay, all right, great, so in that case, it sounds like we're at a point, and let's figure out next steps. So we have um, the review coming back and we expect that, do we have a timeline for that?
We're hoping by early March.
Okay. Um, let's see. So we have, then we have the comments from Bob to be addressed. Um. We have. The. Lori, everything in your memo looks like it's been answered, Fred, you need to take, you're going to take a look at the latest memo with all of those materials. Okay, anything else we need to solve before the next meeting?
I'm just curious to announce, like, are there any other public hearing meetings with that school? Or is it just school committee meetings, like, are there any other? Public forums coming up? In case anyone's watching?
So, um, school committee meeting, it uh, it is on the agenda and will be on the agenda for future meetings, so the next meeting is. Tomorrow's eighth, I believe, the fifteenth. Um, Wednesday. February fifteenth at six thirty PM, and it is. A, um, it is an agenda item on the agenda, and also audience sharing is an opportunity for people to um. Ask any questions, share any concerns.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other items that we would need? I think that's it, so board members will need to go through the memo that came today, Fred's going to review that, we have the peer review coming in, we have Bob's comments. The planner comments have been addressed, um, did we settle on all the waivers, the are the waivers resolved? That we needed, Lori, you recommended partial waivers for some, so whatever. Do we need to vote on any waivers or that we're okay at this point?
You'll vote on those when the public hearing is closed.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, then why don't we look to our next um, hearing for this? If the review doesn't come in until March, should we plan on March seventh as a good time to come back? Does that work? Okay, so we'll do um, March seventh at six PM, does that work for the applicant as well?
It does, thank you.
Okay, so let's see. Oh, it's a weird month, that's why it's so late, the first Tuesday is still the twenty eighth, okay, I see. All right, great, then in that case, is there a motion to continue the public hearing to six PM on March seventh, twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, moved in second and all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
Where's Bill? Oh, Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great, so this hearing will take place again, I at six PM on March seventh, thanks so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'm going to do, I'm going to quickly jump to Crawford Street and the A and R, because those are a couple of things we can just um, handle really quickly. Um, for the three seventeen Crawford Street, we have the continued public hearing for three seventeen Crawford Street site plan approval for site disturbance of forty two thousand five hundred square feet of land. Seems like we just have a request to continue here, I don't know if anybody is. Representing Crawford Street tonight, or we can just continue. To, looks like June sixth at six PM. Is that the last you've heard, Lori?
Yes, I don't expect uh, the applicants be on tonight.
Okay, um, and do we, is it just something they're still preparing all the revised materials and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so in that case, is there a motion to continue the public hearing to six PM on June sixth, twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye, okay, three seventeen Crawford Street continues to June sixth at six PM. Um, really quickly, we have an A and R for three sixty three Crawford Street, if Lori just want to, do you have that on file you could share or available to just?
Sure. Uh, so the proposal is to convert one very large parcel into four parcels, uh, so there is an existing house at three sixty three. Um. Crawford Street. And then the other three lots will get their frontage off of Reservoir Street. Um, there is an issue with uh, zoning violation where they are showing that two of the driveways. Would not be through the lot frontage. I did notify the surveyor that that was an issue. Um, I suggested two different scenarios, they can either go to the ZBA and ask for relief from the requirement that the driveway has to be through the lot frontage. Or they can uh, file a common driveway permit with the planning board. Uh, so they're considering their options, um. The placement of the driveways is not something that the planning board can deny the A and R for. Uh, pretty much the only things that. You're entitled to look at are um, access to the site. Um, meaning the the quality of the road. Um, access from the roadway to the site and whether the lots have sufficient frontage. Um, so all of those three um, aspects are compliant. So I recommend uh, that you folks endorse in our plan.
Amy, you just said that there isn't access to the site?
There, there is access to the site. Uh, so both the Reservoir Street and Crawford Street are roadways of sufficient construction standard. Um, and there are no uh, real impediments that would impede access to the various lots. Um, and as I mentioned, they they all have uh, complying frontage. So the only issue is the the way they designed the driveways. Is uh, in such a way on two of the lots that they won't be able to get a building permit, so. I just gave the um. The surveyor a heads up that these are issues that will have to be addressed.
You don't happen to have the plan up, do you, that you could just share your screen?
Oh, I I have it in front of me, um. And me, uh, if you bear with me a minute, I can probably. Get it. So just uh, just bear with me for a minute.
I guess I just get confused because you just said there was no frontage through the lot. Which is what we need to approve an A and R, but then there is frontage through a lot.
There is frontage, no, what I was talking about is the driveway access.
So there's frontage, but no driveway access.
The definition for lot frontage says that the driveway has to be through the lot frontage.
Mm hmm.
And uh, let's see, here we go. So I'm going to share my screen. So as you can see. Um, so this is the existing home over here, so there's no issue with this one, this is three sixty three Crawford Street. So then they're proposing to create three additional lots. Uh, no issue with this lot right here, uh, they have their driveway through their lot frontage. But this lot right here and this lot right here, they're proposing the driveway through.
Oh.
Uh, this, this first lot, so that's the problem, is that they have to have their driveway through their own lot frontage. In order to qualify for building permit. So they have a couple of different options, they can either reconfigure this, so they put the driveway through their lot frontage. Or they can go to the ZBA to see if the ZBA will give them relief from having their driveway through their own lot frontage. And then the third option is they can do a common driveway. And uh, then it won't be an issue. So. I was just alerting you because I thought that somebody might have a question. Um, so I figured I would head you off at the pass and answer the question before you asked it.
Do we need?
Just made it more confusing for everybody instead.
Do we note that on the plan that it's not buildable as is?
Um. Well, see, the issue isn't that it's noncompliant from a um. Frontage requirement standpoint, so I'd hate to to put that in there. What I can do is I can, I can write up a letter to accompany the A and R plan, so when they come to pick it up. They have the letter explaining what the options are.
Mm hmm.
So if you're okay with that. I I would like to do that.
So in the past, if you did not a buildable lot, it would be, so you cut the middle one through the middle, and then you had a. A lot in the middle that had no access, would that be when you applied the not a buildable lot? If it had frontage?
There are a couple of different uh, different ways, so what we could do is like, say we had a lot with insufficient area. So you're still required to approve it. But then you would write not a buildable lot, another thing is very occasionally, and I never recommend that that folks do this, but sometimes they do for. Uh, permanently protected open space. So you might approve a landlocked, the creation of a landlocked parcel, so it has zero frontage. But it's not proposed to be a buildable lot anyway. So you put not a buildable lot on there, so that's a couple of different scenarios that would. Uh, comply.
Okay, I think a letter would be good because you know, you feel like if we do an A and R and then they come back and say, well, you didn't A and R, but now I. Have to go through hoops to get a driveway.
Be happy to do that.
I don't know what other people think.
No, I think that's a good idea as well. Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that works.
Agreed.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on this one? All right, then. Is there a motion to endorse the plan titled A and R Plan Located at 363 Crawford Street, Northborough, Mass., owned by Robert J. Romeo and Eleanor S. Romeo, 50 South Hick Street, RSE, Worcester, Mass. 01604, dated November 30th, 2022, revised January 10th, 2023, prepared by Land Planning, Inc.?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Lily?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. So Lori, if that's available to sign tomorrow, is that the case or you need to, you need time? If you need time, that's okay. I'll be in the office tomorrow if you, if you want me to sign it then.
Nope, tomorrow would be perfect.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. You can stop sharing your screen if you'd like.
Yeah.
All right, so next we're gonna move over to the public hearing for the property known as Zero and 301 Bartlett Street, Parcel H for Site Plan Approval and a Groundwater Protection Overlay District Special Permit for the Development of a Distribution Center and Warehouse Project. Quickly, while we're bringing in the applicant and team, I just need to read the public hearing notice. So the public hearing notice for the record. The Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023 at 6:05 PM for further proceedings on the application of the Gutierrez Company for Site Plan Approval and a Groundwater Protection Overlay District Special Permit for development of a distribution center and warehouse project on property known as Zero and 301 Bartlett Street. This matter comes before the Board as a result of a decision and remand order of Land Court dated November 9th, 2022, in the case of the Gutierrez Company versus Northborough Planning Board, Case Number 21 MISC 00046, which concerns the plaintiff's appeal from a decision of the Board filed to the Town Clerk on January 13th, 2021, which denied the site plan and special permit application. The property shown on the assessors map 51 is parcel three and map 66 is parcel 16, and is located in the Industrial Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District Areas One and Three. The Land Court decision annulled the Planning Board's decision and part of the remand order, the hearing is limited to review the project under the nine-site-plan decision criteria in Section 703050(c)(2) of the zoning bylaw and a determination of whether the operation and maintenance plan or the snow storage plan previously submitted by the applicant in connection with the application for a groundwater protection overlay district special permit require further detail from the applicant. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. As amended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting from a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Please click on the URL provided in the public hearing notice or joined by phone 3015, I'm sorry. The phone number is 3017158592. Webinar ID and passcode is also included in the public hearing notice and on the website, the Northborough Planning Board town pages. Submitted by Kerry Martin, Chairman, January 19th and January 26th, 2023. So that is the public hearing notice for the record, and I think we have everyone here. So welcome. We have Attorney Donahue, David Robinson, Israel Lopez. Is that the full team tonight?
It's our team.
Okay, great. Welcome back. We also have a town council on the line, Attorney Dineski. So before we get started here, I want to make sure, Attorney Dineski, if you wouldn't mind, just for the clarity of the board, to just give a quick, I know you sent a message to me today to just talk about the purpose of the remand, but I just want to make sure the board understands the, the scope of the remand and what that means for us. And just really, just how, it gives the board an opportunity to sort of discuss further, and I, I want to make sure everyone understands those parameters. So if you wouldn't mind, Attorney Dineski, just sharing a little bit more with the board? And you're on mute, by the way. I can't see you, but I assume you started speaking. Go on mute. Did we lose him? Upset. There he is.
Are we connected now again? Yes.
Oh, yes. Could you do me? Yes.
In, in brief, the purpose was essentially stated in the public hearing notice that was just read. Following the trial, the Land Court made a decision to overturn, if you will, the original decision of the planning board and remanded the case back to the board. And it did so with a limited scope. And the limitation is first to allow the board to review the project under the nine-factor nondiscretionary test for site plan approval, which is in Section 703050 of the zoning bylaw. And secondly, to determine whether or to what extent the operation and maintenance plan and snow storage plan that were previously submitted require further detail. So speaking first to O and M and Snow Storage, which is under the Groundwater Protection Overlay District Special Permit, that is a really fairly narrow inquiry. With respect to the site plan, the exercise is to review the application according to those nine criteria in the bylaw. And the board may do so as it would do any other site plan application. The purpose of that was that the court determined that the original application had not been reviewed and evaluated as it should have been under those nine criteria. So that is the, I would say, larger exercise for the board on this remand because you will and have the ability to go through each of the nine special permit criteria in evaluating the project.
The site plan, more clarifications? Okay, so I was thinking what we could do is start with the, any, the new information provided on the snow plan, new information on the operations plan, and then maybe start there. It seemed like that would be a good place. And then beyond that, we could go through the criteria. I was curious to know if there's any sort of updated business plan for the tenant, and then any update for the status of if the subdivision's moving forward. Does that sound like a good place to start for the applicant?
We'll, we'll proceed as you want, Madam Chair. I, I do recognize that Mr. Pierce didn't have the pleasure of sitting through the first hearings that we went through. And so if you want, we can try to do at least a high-level synopsis to kind of cite it for him and, and obviously refresh the board's recollection, or we can jump right into the O and M plan and Stan Tech's comments.
No, but that might be helpful because I know Lori wasn't here either. So even though Lori's had a chance to go through, the town planners had a chance to go through all the materials, maybe a high level. Would that be helpful? For, I think, is that a helpful thing, especially for Bill and Lori?
Yeah, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, that would be great, actually, if you don't mind that.
Sure, and I'm gonna try to keep it relatively high. If you could let Mr. Robinson share his screen, he can do some of the visuals. We'll try to bring everybody to, to play.
I don't, oh, there you go.
So the cited question is the darkened area that you see here. A piece about seven acres in size, southerly of what you said aqueduct. And then the larger tract, approximately 59 acres, being north of the aqueduct and colored appropriately. The darker green areas are areas that either are presently or will be restricted, subject to conservation restrictions pursuant to the licensing with natural fisheries and wildlife. The lighter green is what is essentially not accessible at this point, and to some extent becomes landlocked and also part of, therefore, de facto open space. As you can see from the plan, the site has singular access off of Bartlett Street through the smaller piece southerly of the aqueduct. Crosses the aqueduct in the easement through the MWRA property of the aqueduct. Enters upon the site, and David, maybe you can go to the more detailed plan, it'd be a little bit easier for, for people to see. Enters the site where one goes westerly into the parking area, which enters the site or proceeds to the loading areas which are along the side of the building. The darker lines reflect various resource areas. There is no alteration of what resources as part of the site. The site is therefore, to some extent, hemmed in by the land that it has available to it. The site has been, and the project has been reviewed beyond the planning board, as was referred to in our 2020 hearings. The Conservation Commission has approved the work that is jurisdictional to the commission. The Design Review Committee approved the design of the building as required by the bylaw. The Groundwater Advisory Committee recommended approval to this board. You received that information previously from Mr. Litchfield. It received a positive review as to safety matters from the fire chief. The project has been also reviewed and approved under MIPA by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. The project has been approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife under the National Heritage and Endangered Species Act. And the site has also been approved for the access across the aqueduct by the MWRA, all which is part of the record. While I generally agree with the scope of the discussion as proposed by Attorney Dineski, I, I do want to make sure the board's aware that the issue of what the applicable test was, was determined prior to trial. And trial was conducted based upon the nine-factor test. And the Land Court judge, as part of his detailed findings, made specific findings based upon that testimony as to how the plan complied and reached the conclusion as set forth in the decision that the site plan satisfies the nine-factor test under the applicable section and should have been approved. And therefore, it beats those requirements as the plan stands. With regard to the O and M plan and the snow storage, the board had cited certain matters in the denial of December of 2020, pardon me. And we, in December of this year, had Alan and Major look at that, those comments, hear some of the testimony that was heard during the course of the trial, and supplemented the O and M plan and the snow storage plan that was submitted to this board early in January. We have the benefit of the review that Stan Tech conducted for the board of that, received those comments. And with one relatively minor comment that we're glad to discuss either with them directly or this evening with regard to cleaning out detention basins, are in agreement with the edits that they seek to the operation and maintenance plan. And we'll be making that as part of our next filing. So there's a lot of information we can go over, but that at least brings you current as far as where the project stands.
Any questions so far? I can't see everybody at the same time, so if you do have one, just give a shout.
What, you want David to take the, the screen down?
Oh, sure. Yep, unless it's party of the next, to talk about the, any other revisions, the snow removal.
I have other questions, but, and I'm gonna need the screen back up, but maybe I go back to them later. Has more to do with the site plan.
Okay, well, why don't we start with the, the snow removal and the O and M, and we'll get that taken care of. I think that's the most cut and dry.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so for the record, my name is David Robinson. I'm a civil engineer with Alan and Major Associates. We're the site civils, surveyors, and landscape architects on the project. I've been the lead engineer on this project for my firm since its inception back in 2019. And as Mark mentioned, we have provided a revised snow storage plan that you see in front of you. Basically, this plan, as was described in the memorandum from my firm, as well as this plan that we provided to the board previously, basically consolidates the proposed snow storage areas as recommended by the town's peer reviewer, Mr. Mark Bartlett, during trial. The areas that you see, the red are the primary snow storage areas. And the blue areas are secondary areas should the red fill up significantly. Think it's pretty straightforward. Brings into all the recommendations we've had over the last two years or so. And we did previously submit this for review.
Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a memo dated January 10th. And on page two of two, it's a memo from David Robinson. It mentions, "Snow storage areas avoid conflicts with trees and landscaping." But, but yet still, when I look at this drawing, the red long rectangle on the front of the building, that's all landscaping, and the little circles in the parking lot, those have trees and landscaping. So that's my question is, how is, how is it avoiding conflicts with trees and landscaping, yet the snow is being pushed on top of it?
It's been designed to the maximum extent practicable to avoid landscape areas. However, in order to meet the minimum landscape requirements, pretty much all of the surrounding perimeter areas and interior areas need landscaping. It's not unusual to store snow in grassed or landscaped areas or around trees to the maximum extent practicable.
But because the building's so big in the parking lot, and there's so much wetlands, that you have to store it on the landscaping?
I think that's typical for pretty much any project in town.
Other questions there?
I guess my concern is I read the bullet and it doesn't match what I see on the drawing.
There are also areas that are in the parking areas.
The ones at the bottom, where they have the parking areas in, within the 40-foot frontage line. So there's a 40-foot setback. And there's some parking within that. So the snow's gonna be pushed onto that, and the line right underneath it is the aqueduct. How do you stop it from slipping down to the aqueduct? Yeah, right there.
This is a high point. This is a high point. Water flows downhill. This is a low point. When it melts, it'll go into this sort of like a basin in the, in the parking area, as it should.
Okay, so you're pushing it up on a hill. What is the slope of the hill that you're pushing it up onto?
It varies between one and a half to one, to greater than three to one.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought I saw there. There's a riprap of one to one and a half. Which is?
Yeah, correct. One and a half on one.
Yeah, so that's pretty steep. So they might need like, I don't know what it'd be, like a forklift, not a forklift, backhoe to push it up if it's, if it's going up a steep slope?
Yeah, Gutierrez hires, you know, the, the best available landscape management companies that would have equipment suitable for clearing a parking lot of this size. It's not.
Okay, it just seems really tight, that you're gonna have to use snow blowers and backhoes.
I think that's typical for large parking lots. If you think like, like a supermarket parking lot or something like that, they usually have a large excavator with a large barrel parked there. I think that's typical for, for, for a decent-sized parking area of 150 stalls.
Which is a new area that you added to the plan?
It's not, it's sort of a combination of some of the old areas and just kind of tried to eliminate the small areas and make it more efficient per the town's peer reviewer comment to combine smaller areas into larger storage areas.
Can you just point out which ones got larger?
Um, you know, I, I honestly can't. It's been reworked a little bit from the previous plan, but a lot of the areas are still the same.
That's why I was wondering. It looks the same as it did before. You know?
If, if you, if you put the two side by side, you see that they're slightly different.
Now, Sand Tech came back and said that this was okay, even though it, it hasn't changed really that much. Like, I guess a big part of our denial had to do with snow removal and snow storage, and we're hearing that it hasn't really changed that much.
This snow storage plan before you significantly exceeds what would be, you know, a minimum requirement for a site of this size as detailed, as we detailed ad nauseam during the trial.
As detailed, as we detailed ad nauseam during the um trial.
Okay, so we have, well, I'm just looking at the memo from Stan Tech. So there is a snow storage plan date. What's the date on this one, by the way?
December 19th, 2022.
Okay, so there's the, I see. So their plan, what the original plan is 3/9/2021. And revised through December 19, 2022. Okay, so this is the final from December 19, 2022. So if we wanted to see the original, would we go to? Which one? The, the March 9th, 2021 plan?
I don't have the date right in front of me, but um I believe we did revise plan. It was, sorry, did you say 2021?
Well, that wouldn't be right because it came before that. So let's see.
March 2021.
March, oh, so okay, so there's one here says um 3/9/2021. So that's the plan. I'm just looking at what the documents were that were reviewed by Stan Tech so that we would understand what, try to understand what was actually changed or not.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, the, the plan date that's being presented, that 2021 date. Is not the base plan that was in front of the board previously or that was an exhibit. At the trial, there, there may be, maybe the case that there was an internal modification. The last revision date of the plan that was before the board was uh October 15, 2020. When, and it was a, it was stamped for board review. So that, there may be again, some internal changes. Um, on the Alan and Major side that resulted in that 2021 date, but I don't know that we or the board have that information at this time.
So, if I might, I, I, I think what we have is, is from the Alan and Major summary. That the areas designated for snow storage have increased from 33,000 square feet to 40,050 square feet. And that the primary snow storage areas increased from 21,900 square feet to 32,450 square feet. And recalling that the trial court found the board's rejection of those earlier numbers to be arbitrary.
Hmm.
I'd suggest that the expansion of the snow storage is moving to try to respond to the concerns as expressed by the board and by its consultant in the course of its testimony at the land court.
Okay. Amy, do you have other questions there? Okay, any other questions? Okay, looks like no. And could you just scroll down for a second? I just noticed the um, you have this bottom. Part two. So then there's the snow storage there as well. Okay. Okay. Uh, it sounds like nothing else there. If you wanna move on, any other? Comments, comments or questions from staff? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So why don't we move on with the um new, any new information on the O and M? And then actually, I do want to make sure we talk about that one component, uh number seven, I think it was.
Yep, so I can address the O and M, the update provided by my firm. Basically, the only change to the O and M plan as requested by the town's peer reviewer, Mark Bartlett at trial was incorporation of a um spill response um portion of the O and M plan. Uh, which was provided to the town previously, revised O and M plan. In uh December of 2022.
Can you just speak to it just in case, you know, there are neighbors listening or other people who don't, didn't understand it in the memo?
Uh, yep. So there's basically two items to the spill response. Um, there's, the first is um keeping um oil cleanup pillows known as poly pillows on site. If there's some type of spill. Um, that's gonna get into the drainage system. You insert these pillows into the catch basins to absorb the oil. And the second one is to um provide a master shut off valve at each of the um inlets to the two infiltration basins on site. Uh, that would completely seal off the drainage from the site from getting into the basins.
Okay, and then the piece that, let's see. There was one piece that you did not agree with, and so if you wanna talk about that a little bit.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure which piece we did not agree with.
Um, it looks like number seven. The um.
Yeah, I, I can address that.
Thanks, Mark.
Sure. Um, point number seven of the Stan Tech review that we received over the weekend. Um, made two suggestions to try to summarize. The O and M plan had provided originally the basins to be inspected for sediment accumulation annually. And any accumulated sediments removed when the depth reaches six inches anywhere in the basin. Uh, Stan Tech's suggestion was twofold. That to change the uh regularity of inspections uh to uh quarterly. Um, and uh to clean out the sediment uh anywhere in a basin that is in an inch or more. Um, the, the quarterly inspection uh certainly following um uh the uh construction uh makes some sense, but given the size of the basins. Um, the, the inch is simply, it's almost an indiscernible amount uh of sediment. Still plenty of room before it would get into the way in any fashion of the system. And so what we recommend instead, which is in my email to Ms. Connors of this afternoon. Is that it would be um rather than six inches, we would suggest three inches. Would still be a material amount of material, so. Uh, just, if, if I, if I, just a procedural matter, Mr. Lopez says he's having trouble being able to be heard. He thinks he's trying to speak, so.
Um, I don't. Oh, we can hear you now. Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Sorry.
Did you have a comment or?
Uh, no, not, not anymore. It was addressed. I just wanted to, it was with respect to the um increase in the amount of snow storage that was available, but um uh, but uh Mark Donna Hugh addressed it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so regarding, if you don't mind um taking down your screen here for a second, I just wanna take a look together at the, the, make sure we're all looking at the same required, not the same suggestion here. So let's see. Um. I think it's this one. Okay, so can everyone see? Um, it's like design with community in mind here?
Hmm.
Okay. All right, so um this is the part that you suggest that it's one inch or more is, is too aggressive. Um, it was six, you're suggesting three. The question I have is what it sounds like um Mark is saying is that this shouldn't even really matter because if the proposed pre-treatments are happening. Um, there really shouldn't be this excessive buildup. Um, it would only be if the erosion control measures are not properly employed. Um, so any, can you speak to that? Maybe why he would think that one wouldn't really be that troublesome? Because really there's, there should maybe be zero or thoughts on that?
I, I, I think the issue, it's a good point that Mark Bartlett makes that, you know, these basins may never see even an inch of sediment because of the upstream water quality units. They're very large, very expensive, very robust units which are designed to drop sediment out um before they ever even reach the basin. I think the issue is if you're visually inspecting a basin that's 210 feet um wide at its widest point and several feet deep. Who, how can you tell a half inch from an inch? You know, it's very difficult. Six inches, sure, you can see that sediment sitting down there, but I think just from a practical standpoint. One inch is difficult to discern given the size of the basin.
Okay. Fred, do you have thoughts on that? Oops, I muted. I don't know what's going on here.
I got it. I got it. I. Um. One inch does seem to be a rather difficult amount to discern, I would agree. Um. Uh, but three inches seems like a reasonable amount. The, the Mark's correct uh from Stan Tech that um, the water quality inlets will do the trick. The other thing to note is that uh once construction is complete, the basins will have to be cleaned. So any sediment that happens during construction will be required to be uh removed prior to the approval of the ASBIL plan and hopefully the occupancy permit, but that'd be uh between the Conservation Commission and myself to make sure that that happens. So there's a, a perfectly clean slate on the floor of the basin to start from uh once they start utilizing the property. So it should be easy to tell. Um, but again, answer your question, three inches is not a, is not unreasonable. One inch seems to be a bit difficult to, to discern.
Okay. Any board comments or thoughts on that? Okay, I don't see any. Okay, anything else on that? Then it looked like the rest of the um recommendations or something that were either already included or will be reflected. Except for that one piece. However, the frequency was not an, an issue. It was really just about the um, how many inches? Is that true?
That's correct. Yep.
Any other?
Our, our intent would be to submit a revised operation maintenance plan responsive to the Stan Tech comments. Uh, so it'd be part of the record um for the board.
Okay, is it possible to um? Laurie, I don't know if this is a question for you or Fred, you work with him or Attorney Dinesky, if you do, to just um run by Mark the thought of reducing to three and if he sees, sees any issue with that, based on what he was trying to get at, accomplished by that switch. My only thought, my only question is he underlined it. So it's, I don't know if he was just trying to point out a difference or that was something that he intended, intended to emphasize. Or if we could just find out like what was his intent? Was that something? Why did he underline that?
Sure, I'll reach out to him.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that? Comments or questions from the board or staff? Okay, great. Um, a couple other things um that I mentioned before. Is there any um updated current business plan for the tenant? And it's been a little while since we last met. Is there, is there any um thoughts on that or is it still unknown?
Um, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, Mr. Lopez can certainly not weigh in, but without having some sense as to when construction could start. It's been significant hamstring to going to market the tenants. Uh, I think the plan at Gutierrez would be to start construction in 2023. Um, and hopefully locate a tenant during the course of that. But Israel, you wanna add to that in any fashion?
No, that's, that's accurate.
Okay. Um, also a question about the um status of the subdivision. Um. Laurie, I think you commented that things would change significantly in this particular plan based on the subdivision. Is that something that the intent is to not pursue? Should this go forward or um any updates on that component?
Um, ju- just to clarify, the, the, the plans are truly independent. Uh, in that the plan before you this evening is based upon a driveway. Um, under that review, the subdivision plan would change certain parameters with, of the work to be done if it was going to be effectuated. The subdivision, uh Mr. Dasky can certainly comment to this, was to some extent stayed by the parties uh as part of a pre-trial discussion with the land court. Um, and we really haven't revisited. If uh, if things go as I just indicated, Mr. Lopez confirmed that construction starts in 2023 on the project. And there'll be little reason for the subdivision plan to be effectuated after that, but time will tell better as to where we go with that, I think.
Okay. Um, Attorney Dinesky, do you have anything to comment on that component?
Uh, with Attorney Don Hughes' comments, I, I wouldn't have anything further to add. I think it's a question of timing.
Okay. Um, Laurie, does that answer? Oh, Amy, you have a question?
So what Mark, um Attorney Don Ho just said was that if this warehouse is built, the subdivision won't be going forward? Is that what you were saying?
Uh. I, I haven't, I candidly haven't thought that all the way through yet um to be able to answer that question definitively.
Cause one of the questions I had was this parcel with the parcel H on it was originally part of a bigger parcel that was 82 acres that had parcel G on it. And parcel G was subdivided off, so like 24 acres were taking off of the 82, which leaves what we have now. But when they did the whole analysis on the parcel G, such as how much wetlands they have, their open space. They did it on the 24 acres. But today, if we're gonna do an analysis in a site plan review on the whole 66 acres. I'd like to see an analysis on that one parcel. If that's the only parcel that's gonna be used for the warehouse. Because if you all of a sudden do all your analysis on 66 acres. Chop it off. Now the numbers change. Now we're not really getting 60% open space and we're not really getting what has been brought forth to us as a board. Everything changes and, and there's been a constant talk of you have 400 feet of buffer in front of the warehouse of trees, yet if you're subdivided off, there it goes. So, I mean, when they did the parcel G. They knew the subdivision was gonna happen and all the numbers were done that way. If you think or know that this is gonna be subdivided after the warehouse, then we should know in advance so we can base our site plan off of the actual um parcel.
That through you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, Gutierrez has been clear from the get-go. Uh, and consistent in the messaging that the desire of the company is to proceed with the plan that's before you this evening. And provided that it is approved and it's able to proceed, that will be the intention. If something changes, then it, then by definition, things change and they'll have to change at that time. But it's speculation as to whether it'll be changed. We're hoping that we're gonna end up with an approval and be able to proceed with the work this year.
So if you were approved for a warehouse on the promise that there's 400 feet of frontage in front of the warehouse. You wouldn't mind putting like a conservation restriction on the 400 feet in front of the warehouse? If it's not gonna be subdivided in the future, if you get the warehouse that you want? But that would be a condition I would be thinking about. The conservation.
That condition would not be acceptable.
Then we have no proof that you're not gonna subdivide out the second that you get your approval. And the 400 feet buffer to the front of the warehouse is now not the buffer anymore.
The, the ability to lift, to build on the land is based upon staying in compliance with the permits that one gets to build upon the land.
Okay, but then we should look at the site plan with the frontage and with the, cause if you look at the lot in the back right now. The parking lot is in the 40 feet front setback. But the reason when you went to trial, you said, well, we have 400 feet of frontage in front of us. That's a buffer. So you've built in that front setback, but now if you sell it off in the future. That 400 feet that you used in trial as buffer really wasn't a buffer. I guess that's just what I'm trying to say. Is that there is a lot of criteria used to make this site plan sound better. Only to chop it off and in the end, the result really isn't better because now the buffer has disappeared.
I, I don't know how to be any clearer. The hope is that this plan will be approved. And if it's approved and we're able to proceed with the work, it'll proceed in accordance with this plan.
Right, this plan, but then there could be a subdivision plan following it.
Okay, so why don't, it sounds like we covered those areas. The next part is to now take a look at the site plan, unless there's anything else we need to cover before we jump into that.
Um, when you said those areas. Um, when you said those areas, do you mean the?
The, so the special permit component, so I'm sorry, um, backing up. So we had the special permit component, so we had that limited scope where we looked at. The groundwater, we, so we had the groundwater special permit. Um, actually, I do have a question. There is um a second groundwater special permit, the groundwater um. Into groundwater one, part of the driveway goes into groundwater one.
Yep.
So that is one piece we, I did not put on here to, to discuss. Is that something, what does that look like today? I think we, the last we met. That went back and forth. I think if we just get a refresh on that component of it. Is that still, is there still part of the driveway in groundwater one or is that not the case anymore?
The, the, the plan that you ruled upon. Uh, in the denial and was a subject of appeal. Was the plan, the original plan, which had a section of the driveway in groundwater one.
Okay, so you still require this, the per, the special permit for the. X number of square feet that goes into groundwater one.
That's correct, but that was also part of the hearing at the trial court.
Okay. So nothing on that staff? We don't need anything on that attorney Dinesh, we don't need anything on that?
The representation is that there's not a change from that slight uh intrusion, if you will, into area one, so that would remain part of the. Approvals that are for this board to consider.
Okay. Comments on that? Questions? Okay. Um, let's see, one second, because I do, I did have a note on that.
So that's the part in the subdivision that was moved over to.
Oh, no, no, not in the subdivision, in the driveway, there is a little. There was that little, little tiny piece that went into the groundwater one area. So it is a second special permit for that component of it.
Right, but in the subdivision, they moved it over a little bit to get it out of that. Is that what I understood? But I know we're not talking about the subdivision, but. It stands as it originally was in, in the original plan, so it's still. Still is in groundwater one, correct?
Yeah, would, would, would you like Mr. Robinson to pull the plan up so we can see what?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would actually be helpful and just clear that up pretty quickly.
One second, bear with me here.
Sure.
I think.
This is subdivision basically took it out of groundwater one, right?
Couldn't, I couldn't speak to one personally.
I think it did.
Can everyone see the uh plan?
Yes.
Uh, so it's gonna be difficult for me to zoom in here, but uh. This. Tiny piece.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay. Okay, so that, that, I think the confusion is at the very end, we may have talked about. That came out of it and I maybe we're just mixing up the plan. So that still makes sense. It looks the same as it was before. Does any, is that clear to every board member that that's still the case? That little piece there?
Yep.
Okay.
I do have to make one comment. I really loved this presentation in color with the trees and everything on it. Would be great to get a copy of that. It's so much easier to see it and understand when you see. The different colors and the different aspects of the drawing versus just black and white. Flat picture.
Sure, I'll make sure Ms. Carter gets a PDF.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that up. That's helpful. All right, so we have no action there. We don't need any action there. So in terms of the special permit, we've covered um. Those two components that we were able to look at. So if there's no further questions on that, anything else on that one? Okay, why don't we then, so move over to the site plan. So in the case of the site plan, um, based on what Attorney Dinesh has shared. This is our typical site plan review. So in that case, um, we will look at the nine. Criteria of the um, the site plan review and let's see, I need to switch over my materials here. Okay, let's do this. Okay, does everybody have uh their, the right criteria in front of them? We're doing the nine factor test for site plan review. Um, Attorney Don Hugh, I know you sent over um a letter that sort of walked through that, um, and you mentioned that. What we had here is some of the things from land court, just for um clarification. So I, when I went back. And looked at um each section and can, and looked at the decision from the court. It looked like everything was footnoted as um the pre-file testimony from Timothy Williams. So um although this was in the land court decision, what looked like was in this letter was. The testimony from Timothy Williams, is that what's reflected in here for each quote that you included?
No, what, what I took is language directly from the decision after trial by Judge Smith. And his section of uh specific findings of fact he made based upon the testimony.
But then each section had a footnote to tell me that like all of it was from exhibit forty-four, which was the pre-file testimony of Timothy Williams. Is that your person?
That's correct.
Okay, so. So in each section, it looks like this wasn't like the judge's quotes. This is, these are quotes from Timothy Williams, his testimony.
No, they are, they are findings of fact made by the court. You know, I, I, whether the judge made them based upon pre-file testimony is probably indicative of the footnote. Um, you know, the, the planning board chose to not submit any evidence challenging. Mr. Williams's testimony about compliance with the nine factor test. But that, that was a decision that the planning board made.
Okay, so I just want to be clear though, because I was trying to follow along with all the footnotes and every single thing you included had a footnote that referenced. Exhibit forty-four, which was the pre-file testimony of Timothy Williams. So which is fine, it just, I just want to make sure that, because in some cases it makes it sound like. This was the judge's quotes, but literally every single one is footnoted with exhibit forty-four, Tim, Timothy Williams. And so that, so what I'm looking at is really the testimony from your representative, your expert.
It, the footnotes go often to his pre-file testimony. And certainly the fact that there was no pre-file testimony on the nine factor test from the planning board. Um, might indicate why the judge made certain finding.
Okay, all right, well, that's good to know.
But it doesn't mitigate the findings.
No, 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 I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't, um, I noticed in the, the footnote, it was pre-file testimony, it wasn't a live. Examination of any witnesses. It was all like copied and pasted sort of pre-file testimony. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
If I may, Madam Chair, I, I think that the basic question, just so everyone is clear. The citations in the decision. To the pre-file testimony are the court's way of referencing. The evidence quote unquote that it used to make a finding in the decision.
Got it. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. So really, the, the, what we should do here tonight is go down each, so go down each one and I asked, made sure the board. Went through and read, but also what our role as part of this remand is to um. Really the opportunity to make further findings of fact, so um. If we have questions or inquiry or value, further evaluation on this criteria um as we go down each one. And I know I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Um, if other board members have any specific questions, I think it makes sense to go down the line. And if you have anything else beyond what you provide in this letter, Attorney Dinesh, is there anything, I'm sorry, Attorney Don Hugh, is there anything else um? That you wanted to present or is this? Is this primarily what you have for each piece of the criteria?
The, the, the purpose of my February second letter was to try to synthesize for the benefit of the board. Um, the findings from the court on the nine factors that had to be determined. Um, and were heard by the court at that time. Um, we're glad to try to. Provide any additional information that's readily available to us. Um, uh, for any particular point of inquiry. Um, we did review in some. Detail the site plan back in twenty twenty, but. Glad to. Uh, at least engage in this inquiry wherever it's going.
Okay, great. All right, does, why don't we start with um the first one here? So looking at. Uh, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna reference your letter. So uh, the first element. We have here is. Reduce the clearing and grading on the site or reduce the volume of cut and fill, number of removed trees, the length of removed or altered stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation displaced. The extent of the stormwater flow increase from the site, soil erosion or threat of air-water pollution. And then um we see here um the testimony that was given. Um, any comments or questions from board members here?
I have one. Sure. Um, Dave Robinson, can you bring up the, the um site plan that you showed? The first one, there was a first. Picture that had the conservation land. Could you just show where the thirteen point two acres of conservation land are?
Yes, one second. Can everyone see that?
Mm-hmm, it's down a little too, it's up a little too high, yeah. Yeah, can you just point out where the thirteen acres are?
Yep, it's right in, in this area surrounding the site.
So those are the new thirteen acres?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um, just because it says the thirteen point two acres of the property is a border between the residential neighborhood. And the project, and it is a little bit, but it's not. The whole thirteen point two acres is not bordering the residential neighborhood. Um, can you tell us how many of those trees are gonna be preserved? Like, how many feet of trees are preserved there?
You, you, you can see the tree line that's gonna be preserved in dark, the dark green here.
Yep, do you know, I mean, I don't have a, a ruler. Do you know how many feet that is between the lines?
Between, sorry.
Like right there.
Right here, it's, it's several hundred feet.
So there'll be several hundred feet of trees right there?
Yeah, yes, and that of course doesn't count the existing. Uh, wooded area at the rear of these lots on Sterebrook. That's just for our site. Right, and then there's a large undeveloped area right here. It's hu, it's hundreds and hundreds of feet. I don't have the exact number.
Just because I was thinking about the waiver for the trees being tagged and I would like to see the trees tagged that are gonna be saved, like the big ones.
So.
To make sure it's just not scrub.
Yep, so if, if you've been out to the site, you know that this area where the building is going is sort of a plateau. That's largely been cleared. It's more scrub shrub habitat in the area of the building and the mature. Uh, hardwood trees are kind of around the perimeter and then again in the rear of these residential lots. So the majority of the area that's going to be developed is. Uh, there's, there's, it's scrub shrub habitat. It's more just vegetation and not mature trees, not mature forest, I should say.
I guess for myself, because it says thirteen point two acres are a buffer, but it's really only that small little section. I'd like to know. Exactly how many feet. It is, and I'd like to see a picture if you have, or maybe, you know, Bill and Laurie didn't walk the site. And when we walked it, it was around the back of the trail. And um the other day I went down in front of it on the road and you can see how close it is to the road. I'm wondering if, if. Bill or Laurie or if the other board members wanted to just walk the site one last time, just to see. How big the trees are that are gonna be saved and like. How wide the area is. Is it flagged where this conservation restriction is?
Uh, not yet, no, that's, hasn't been flagged. What is flagged are the wetlands. I don't know if they're still up from, you know, two, three years ago.
Right.
Uh, but I did with Israel and the Concom agent at the time, we walked this entire. Flagged area, so you can get a feel for where the wetlands are if you see the blue flags out there.
Because for me, when I was thinking about a buffer, because there's supposed to be a hundred feet. Um, buffer in between residential and the industrial. And part of that buffer is actually on the parking lot, so I wanted to see exactly. How many feet were actually gonna be left of buffered trees?
I'm not sure about the, the statement that uh the hundred foot buffer is, is within the parking area.
Oh, it's on the site plan. The line goes through the bottom left corner. You might have it here. In your plan.
Uh, no, I, I don't have that on, I don't have that on any plans that we uh are presenting this evening.
Oh. All right, I can.
Oh, that, that, are you sure that that's not the buffer to the building?
Well, there's a hundred foot buffer in between the building and the property line of the residential.
To the, it's to the building, right? Not to the parking lot.
Yeah, but it's in, like, the line goes across the parking lot. So if you.
So that would be in compliance with, with the regulation.
Right.
The bylaw provision relates to the building. It's a setback from buildings.
Right, but it would get rid of this part of the hundred foot buffer. Or it has to be a fifty foot buffer within the hundred feet. I just want to make sure there's a fifty foot buffer there. And it would be great if it was trees.
We can verify the fifty foot for you.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
So the thirteen area acres also include in the middle where it says conservation restriction area, so it's the whole. Parcel from the middle all the way to the. Left.
Uh, so there is some existing conservation restriction area over here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the thirteen point two begins in this area and is largely around the building here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a, a feel for what the thirteen point two acres is.
So we do um. Uh, we did submit a, uh, unapproved conservation restriction plan early in this project to the uh. Division of Fisheries and Wildlife that was approved for the thirteen point two, where I believe we, we provided that to the board as well, showing where we're proposing the. Conservation area. This is more of just a informational graphic for locating the site and showing the significance C R area on the property.
And if I could, if I could add just to point out, it, it also relates to. Compliance with the provisions of the, the dimensional provisions of the bylaw, uh, which require open area of fifty percent. Um, uh, well, lot coverage, pardon me, of fifty, no, more than fifty percent, lot coverage here is about five point eight seven percent.
And twenty-five percent open space?
We, we easily meet the twenty-five percent open space for this fifty-nine acre site.
And fifty percent of it can't be wetlands, right? That's according to one of the bylaws is. It's fifty percent of the. Open space percentage cannot be wetlands. Do you know if you've met that?
Yeah, so I, I did review that portion of the bylaw.
Is there any way to show where the open space is? I mean, probably not tonight.
The open space is everything outside of this shaded area.
Out of the envelope.
With. And yes, it's, it's, it's detailed.
Cause thirty-one acres of it is wetland of the sixty, right, at least?
I'm not sure exactly what the acreage of wetlands is on site.
Okay, I have the plans.
Do you see something different, Amy, or?
No, I just, I didn't, I don't know how much of the open space is not wetlands, I guess. Know how much of the open space is not wetlands, I guess. I was trying to figure that out, and I didn't know if they already had it figured out, because it was a lot for me to try to do.
I, I did review that portion of the bylaw. I'm just wasn't, not, not prepared to get into the details of it this evening.
Mm-hmm, I just want to make sure it's on the back parcel, because if you. Subdivide off the front parcel, then you might not meet the open space requirement.
Right, but the, this, the petition before you doesn't propose to subdivide anything for the project, right?
Okay, so how do we, you do have something that shows the open space requirements met. It's just not here with you tonight, so that's easy enough for you to share at some point?
Correct.
If, if I may, um, Madam Chair, it's shown on the, and. It's shown on the zoning table, I believe, on each plan sheet for each site, for each lot. So that should be. Relatively easy to. Spot check. I mean, we can do it now if you'd like.
Okay, um, no, if it's something, is it right there? If you just scroll down, are you saying, or?
I, I don't, I don't have that easily accessible. Um, unless Israel, uh, if you want me to go offline for a minute and. Pull up the site plan, but it's not. I don't, I don't, go ahead.
We'll, we'll, we'll give specific reference to the page of the site plan. Remember that we're only looking at a, a depiction here for purposes of presentation. Um, and that, that all of the calculations are shown on, and we'll do that in the morning.
Okay, that'd be great. Is that helpful, Amy, for you?
Yeah, and it would be great if it was shown on the picture, though, not just, I have the table with the numbers. But it doesn't actually say, it just says the quote that fifty percent. Of the open space cannot be wetlands, but it doesn't show. Exactly on the parcel where the fifty percent are that aren't wetlands. Because this, this parcel is. Covered with wetlands.
So can they, if they were to subdivide, can they subdivide to make a current lot non-compliant with the bylaws? They can, if that can't be done, can it?
You can, you can subdivide into a not build-up lot, yeah.
But the lot that has the building on it can't be made then non-compliant? Is that what you're concerned about?
That and all the numbers change, like all the rosy numbers of all this open space. If you chop off the front. That's not your open space anymore.
Right, but I, I don't know that you can do that if it makes another lot non-compliant.
I guess I just wanted to see it on the plan.
Attorney, Attorney Dineshki, thoughts from you on that? Is that something to be concerned with or not necessarily concerned with, or?
I think the general proposition or principle here is that. You are not permitted to create a situation of zoning non-compliance. Uh, and not have then the question of enforcement against it. So I think there's, i- i- I think the applicant can speak to this, but there's uh, in some sense, um. A stick there to, um. Keep. To the minimum required at least. Those areas and percentages that would be required by the bylaw and on which uh, any approval. Or permits uh, are issued.
Hmm, does that, so meaning your lot will always have to stay in compliance? It can't, we can't one day reconfigure it and it's no longer in compliance. It always has to stay in compliance.
I, I think there are various levels and degrees of compliance here, eh, some of which may be more detailed than we're uh, discussing now, or. Uh, not able to fully discuss now because we don't have all the data in front of us. But the point is. Creation of a zoning non-compliance results in a situation that would merit or. Uh, be appropriate for zoning enforcement and be creating a violation and that in itself, I would determine. I would take the view that it is a violation. So the, the same as if simply you had. Uh, a situation of. A single house lot, for example, that had the minimum area and then you carved off. A portion of it so that you no longer had the minimum area. And then creating a zoning violation.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so it sounds like, um. Amy, does that answer what you're looking for? So really, we're just looking for, um. The applicant will give reference to the page in the site plan we should look at to look at those numbers.
Sure, and I, I wanted to know how many feet of, um. Trees were there between the butters and the industrial.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments there?
I have one.
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
Really quick, um. And, and I, I apologize if this. Was probably brought up before, um, again, I'm sort of muted to this. Um, procedure, um, or this particular lot, but. Um, I know one, we did receive an email from, um. A, a citizen who. Referenced a, uh, a, a report from Sanborn Head. Um, are you familiar with this, with the report?
Mm-hmm.
In question? Um, it speaks about, um, C V O Cs. That have been found in the soil in the area. Um, and I know this particular. Um, criteria right at the end mentions threat of air or water pollution. I know we're going to be disturbing a lot of soil here. Have there been soil tests done at this site to make sure that? We're not going to be releasing anything potentially when we disturb the soil?
Comments on?
Maybe, if, if I might, uh, Chair, um. So the Sanborn Head, um, uh, report, as it's referred to, was actually testimony that the board received in twenty twenty. Uh, at the same abutters behest. Um, with regard to assertions of, uh, issue. And what it indicated in that report, um, evidence was that there had been. A documented release on property uh, off of Hayes Memorial Drive, not on the property. There was no evidence of any type of release had occurred on the property. Uh, and based upon that, um, the Sanwood Head did not recommend to the property owner any further investigation. Um, it is a significant distance to groundwater here. Uh, and we don't see any risk as far as the disruptions concerned that would justify it in any fashion.
Because.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Sorry, they did mention in, in the report that, you know, it is basically downhill. Where, where the, where it was found on Memorial Drive is basically downhill from. Your lot, which is then downhill into residential areas. So that, that's my concern is, um, you know, this sort of works like asbestos, right? You move the, move the, uh, you know, asbestos is fine while it's. In place, as soon as you disturb anything with it, it gets up into the air. So that, that, that's my only question. Is just, you know, ha- have there been any soil tests or anything done? Uh, I'm assuming from, from your answer that there haven't been, but.
There have not been, there's none intended and there's none recommended by the consultants retained by Geteris.
Okay, and so there is no phase, there was not a phase two study. This was a phase one. There is no, like, I think they. Do delineation of where the leak ends or anything like that that you know of?
I, I couldn't speak to what has happened since that report with regard to the site where the release occurred. Which was not. Geteris property in any fashion, was on the opposite side of Hayes Memorial Drive, so. I have no idea where that stands, but they've been. Obviously identified, they are responsible parties under Massachusetts law, and I'm sure they're complying if they need to, uh, which will include. Uh, any, any other, um, results to bring it to what's referred to as a permanent solution.
Okay, so it looks like, um. I had noted this too, Bill, um. So the release of C V O Cs are identified in groundwater soil and or indoor air at four properties near and or potentially. Up gradient of the site. So that was one seventy and two hundred to two oh two Bartlett Street, one eleven Hayes Memorial Drive, forty Hayes Memorial Drive. And thirty-three Hayes Memorial Drive. So those, I think, were the properties. Um, impacted. Um, so what they were doing at the time, it looked like, um. As a delineation of the potential extent of the C V O C release of thirty-three haze in groundwater has not been completed. Um, this property is likely located up gradient of the easternmost portion of the site. Um, it was San Board Head's opinion that this up gradient release constitutes an, uh, uh, R E C to the subject site. So that's the last thing we have on file. It sounds like that's the last thing you have on file as well?
To my knowledge.
Okay. Okay, and then Attorney Dineshki, I think you have maybe commented on this before, or I don't know, maybe that was Lori, I apologize, I can't recall. So. What is, um, who is obligated to follow up on that? I think we discussed this before too. So if there's some sort of R E C on the. Uh, it really, on the edges of the property or whatever the case, what, who looks at that next? Is it?
If there was a report. Or an identification of a condition that requires reporting to D E P, there is a, a regulatory process. For that particular property owner to follow.
Okay, so not related to what we're looking at here, even if it's leaked into this property. That is not something that needs to be tested or reviewed, or what happens if?
The, the existence of a condition on a property that's outside of. An application property, which is the circumstance that we have now. Um, without. Additional circumstances that. I'm not aware of in this case would not, in my view, be a basis for further. Study or evaluation in connection with this application. Again, if any property owner is notified that there's a reportable condition. On their property, then there is a whole regulatory mechanism for. Remediation of that accord, in accordance with the D E P requirements.
Okay, so theoretically, then thirty-three haze is the one who is responsible for finishing those studies and making sure they. Delineate the spread and all of that.
The property owner right would be responsible for following the regulatory requirements.
Okay. Okay, Bill, do you have additional questions on that?
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, um, next we have the, um. Criteria, reduce the risk of groundwater contamination from onsite wastewater disposal system or operations on the premises involving the used storage, handling or containment of hazardous substances. Questions or comments on this one? I don't see any there. Uh, number three, improve pedestrian bicycle or vehicular safety both on the site or aggressing from it. Comments or questions on this one? Millie?
I, I have some, some questions on this. So the traffic impact study that was done. Um, by, I believe it was Nagy. Um, you know, does, does cover the impact of moving traffic and, um. Trucks moving in and out. What wasn't at all mentioned and has really become a problem is trucks. Idling on road sides, trucks parking on road sides. Turning around driveways and things like that. So. At some point, how do those get factored into what the impact would be? Because they, they're not mentioned at all, and they definitely are impactful on. All of the businesses, all of the residents nearby. And the roadways, it's a, it's a safety concern. And also on the driveway. We've noticed trucks queuing up in certain lots. Is there accommodations or something that can be done to help alleviate those issues?
Um, th- through you, Madam Chair, I, I can reply at least to the second part, I guess, by pointing out. The length of the driveway. Um, and also, you know, the, the, the size of this building is simply a different scale than buildings where you may be seeing. Significant queuing, uh, if that's the reference, um, but there's significant room for onsite queuing. Uh, there's significant room in the loading area, uh, for, uh, staging essentially. Uh, so it, it is not expected for a building of this. Not just size, but also configuration with loading docks only on one side and not the entire length of the building. That the site would not be able to accommodate vehicles as far as wanting to get on the site. Uh, being able to get on the site and get off of Bartlett Street.
Okay, I can, I can agree that the length of the driveway would be helpful. It's just has been a concern that I want to mention. Um, but also the, the, you know, the trucking regulations for drivers who need rest. And they're pulling over on the side of the road. Is there any way to. Incorporate an accommodation for areas onsite for truckers to. Uh, meet the mandates for their, their, um, hours on the road and their sleep requirements?
Um, it, it was a, in a fashion, or through you, Madam Chair. Uh, in, in a fashion, that's a question that was raised or a comment raised by Ms. Connors in, in her, uh, comment letter to us. Um, uh, one does come with another is that if you somehow accommodate it on site, you often end up with idling issues. Um, which can uh, also be problematic in some fashion. Geteris' practices to neither, uh, encourage, promote, or allow that to occur onsite.
So the traffic impact. Really is that it would be off-site and it would be on our roadways. But that is not really accounted for in their studies. So that's just, just a concern that, that is coming up.
It. I, I understand it's coming up in some fashion, um. Uh. It's, it's hard to bring that to, uh, a, a particular, uh, relationship here without knowing the tenant. Um, the tenant may not even be open some of those same hours, so it's hard to say. It is, as I said, a significantly different type of building, uh, and therefore has a different type of, uh, demand.
Could I ask a quick question on that? Sure, um, in the previous hearing when we had a, a couple meetings, you did talk about it. Would be more of a low-impact warehouse. Not a parcel hub, not a fulfillment center. You still foresee this with the number of bays and. That this would not be a high-impact warehouse? Or you have no idea? It was said over and over. Previously in twenty twenty.
Well, I, through you, Madam Chair, um, I, I think what you, you may be referring to. Is that the, um, V H B traffic report. And the anticipated traffic to the site was based upon a certain type of usage. Um, which was more of a traditional, uh, classification of a warehouse, not. Some of the defined terms of a high queue parcel hub or something of that nature. And as was submitted at that time, the basis for that is both the size and configuration of the building. Usually wouldn't work for that type of operation.
Okay, FedEx is really small. It's like, I have the numbers, it's forty-three thousand square feet. But wouldn't that be considered some sort of a? Parcel hub, or that's different? I don't know if anyone knows. What FedEx would be considered?
I'm not sure. We don't have Bob on. Do we know, uh, well, actually, we have the application, I'm sure. We could check that.
Because I would see, I think three oh one Bartlett is more of. A warehouse where there aren't as many trucks coming and going. But FedEx, which is small at forty-three thousand square feet, has a lot of trucks coming and going. So it doesn't always seem like size. Aligns with the amount of trucks that come and go. Hmm, I guess that's my own point. And one question I didn't ask, but maybe I'll.
And one question I didn't ask, but maybe I'll ask while it's up. How tall is this warehouse? How many feet? I see in your site plan, it says it goes up to sixty feet, but there's no, at least I didn't see an elevation plan.
Are the, I believe what the layout plan says is that it, the height will be less than sixty feet. I, I don't have an exact number, but we'll comply with the dimensional regulation that's required.
Just to put in perspective, do you know how tall the warehouse next door is, three oh one? Or even the Amazon? Nobody knows.
I don't. The only thing I would say is that with this particular site, this entrance point at Bartlett Street is fifteen feet higher in elevation than the building. So the building sort of set down, as you go into the site, you go down, and there's a fifteen-foot, pretty significant difference from here down to the actual finished floor elevation of the building. So it's, it's not set up on a, on a hill like some of the other surrounding properties. It's actually down from, as compared to the roadway.
But if it was sixty feet, you'd still see forty-five feet of building.
Right, but we, we, we had indicated that it would be less than sixty feet.
Right. I guess I could probably find out from Bob. I was just curious how big the other buildings are that have been built on that street. Just to put it in perspective, it'd be interesting to see how big three oh one Bartlett, which is next door, and how I know they're at the street, but then they go down.
So if, if I could, I did work on the Hayes G project, and I recall the clear height for that one was thirty-six feet. That's typical for these, these style warehouses along Bartlett Street. So, you know, much, much significantly less than sixty feet. And then, you know, with that fifteen-foot drop, it really brings the profile of the building is pretty limited from the roadway.
Okay, I think I want to, I read that Hayes G and three oh one Bartlett are the exact same.
They probably are. They're, they're right in that thirty-six foot. I believe that's what Gutierrez used for the style of buildings, is a thirty-six foot clear height.
So you'd see about twenty-one feet of warehouse from the road.
And don't for, well, don't forget, you've got, you know, this vegetated screening in here. We're providing these nice trees along the entrance drive. There's additional screening here, and then along the face of the building here, it may, it, it, there is screen, additional screening in that.
Do you know the elevation and slope down to the residential neighborhood? Like, it's fifteen feet from Bartlett, but from Sturrock Brook neighborhood, does it slope up higher? Or is it down lower?
The slope's down this way, and then back up on the other side of the wetlands where the houses are over here. So the wetland is sort of a low point. But again, there's this robust vegetated screening between the warehouse, the proposed warehouse and the existing homes to the west.
Right, but if the homes are lower, then you'll be looking up at all the lights in the parking lot in the building.
I, I, I guess with, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand where we're going. The sixty feet comes from the dimensional table as to what's allowed in the zone for a building. But it's not anticipated the building's going to be that tall. I'm not sure where this discussion's going, since it's a building being built in compliance with the dimensional requirements.
I just wanted to see the, um, the view of it. Like, sometimes we get pictures of the street view. One lineman gave us pictures of how the building was going to look in relation to the residential zone on one side and the warehouses on the other. And that's how they decided, how much, or we decided how much of a buffer that we needed, the size of the trees that we needed. I guess it's hard to put this in perspective, being flat on the impact it's going to have to the abutting neighborhoods. And some of the criteria talks about the visualization with the abutting neighborhoods.
It does. Unlike one lineman, which I have at least glancing familiarity with, the closest residential building to this building is more than seven hundred feet away through a relatively densely vegetated area that includes a wetland resource area and, and is also at a grade higher than the building. So I, I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not sure drawing the comparison to a residential property hard by a property line for an industrial property is really analogous.
Well, they could actually clear cut up to their property land too, but I'm just wondering, you just said that they're at a grade higher, but he mentioned it's at a grade lower.
No, no, what I said was the wetlands are lower. So this building's up at about two seventy-five, and we did look at the Towns G I S earlier today of the topography. This is up high, the wetlands are always down low, and then the neighborhood to the west is at about roughly the same F F E as this, so it's not lower. The, the low point is the wetlands in between the proposed buildings and the residences to the west.
Okay, so the residents to the west are the same elevation, so you're saying they have to see it through the trees?
And, I mean, a seven hundred-foot buffer, you know, vegetated buffer, you know, the, the, the bylaw requests one hundred feet, we meet that. We've got seven hundred-plus feet to the very closest house, never mind the other houses. So I, I think that's a pretty robust buffer.
Well, the hundred foot is your setback. The seven hundred feet includes their property.
Right, but that they're looking through their, I mean, we, we meet the hundred feet from our property line, and that's what we need.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you can't include their property.
Well, currently, i- if you, if you were asking for visualizations from the residential property, if we did those, you'd have a seven hundred-foot buffer.
Okay, so the, all right, it'd be good to walk the site, just to see, even with the leaves down in the winter, if you walked over there, you couldn't see the houses?
My understanding is no, you wouldn't be able to see them. And I've been on the site many times. I don't think I've ever seen a house from, from this area of the site.
Okay. I wouldn't mind doing it. I don't know about the rest.
It's very, it's very dense. It's well-treed in between the two.
Okay, so Amy, coming, well, first, I think we're, we might be at the next one, but I, we're a couple down, but I, I want to make sure we get back to the criteria number three. Are you speaking to items for criteria number five?
Um, yeah, and actually, three, I, I was looking at the building, so it, it made me think of asking about how high it was. But for number three also, I'd be concerned about the crossing of the aqueduct. You know, there's a trail there, Northborough Trail. And that would be a concern, you know, to have one of the signs that either let the trucks know or the pedestrians know that the trucks and the pedestrians will be interacting at that light or at that crossing. You know, some places have the flashing pedestrian signs that say warning trucks are.
What is planned there? Is there something? Oh, Laurie, do you have something to say to that?
Um, actually, I've been looking online to see if I could find the elevation plans. So in response to the question, the proposed building as shown on the elevation plan is thirty-seven feet tall.
Okay.
Sure, so in the same, I apologize, the same ballpark, thirty-six, thirty-seven, similar.
I guess I would just want some sort of warning sign for crossing, pedestrian crossing, because you can tell how close the aqueduct is to the building and parking lot.
Well, we, we have discussed this previously. As previously requested by the board, as you can see, we do have a couple of pedestrian crossing signs here and here, and then acrosswalk, across this flat drive, driveway across the aqueduct.
Doesn't include one of those new signs that they have that if they push the button, it would flash so the trucks would know someone was crossing? What type of sign would it be?
It, it would be a, just a, a standard pedestrian crossing sign with no, no flashing lights at this point.
What is the grade as you go over it?
It's very flat. It's very flat, as you can see through the contours here. This was purposefully built up to, to make a crossing across the aqueduct. This is low. This is low, and there's several feet, like, you can't really, it's, you can't really tell how, how what the grade difference is, but this is nice and flat, and it's been built up to cross through here.
Yeah, the trucks will cross through. What about the pedestrians? Does that change the grade of the crossing of the aqueduct?
It's pretty much the same as the existing. It's very flat with just enough pitch to shed drainage, shed water runoff.
Okay. Okay, so, the other thing I had a question of for here is, I don't think, Laurie, you may not have seen it yet, or it didn't come out yet. But one thing that was done since we last met was the Bartlett Street Road Safety Audit. And there are a couple of stats out of here that were concerning to me, and I, I want to figure out a way to make sure that we're not adding to this. And one stat that truly stood out was that nearly thirty percent, so since Amazon, since the construction opening of Amazon, there's been an uptick in tractor-trailer crashes relative to all crashes. So the report, which was conducted by C M R P C, that's our regional planning agency, that nearly thirty percent of crashes since May twenty twenty have involved tractor-trailers compared to seven percent of crashes from twenty sixteen to April twenty twenty, making the crash rate jump nearly twenty-seven percent in that timeframe. And I would like, I know the board received a lot of materials today. I don't know if you actually received this, the Bartlett Street Road Safety Audit. I, I think it'd be great for the applicant to receive it as well, but you can see just an updated report on what's happening on that street in terms of safety. Some of the, the issues that were flagged, and some of those major intersections over by this property, where we're really seeing problems. The Liman Street intersection, they, they cover the Cedar Hill intersection, really going along that whole route of Bartlett Street that I don't, you know, I won't take the time now to go through this entire report, but I think it'd be helpful for the board to review and, and applicant as well to brainstorm what, what we can do here to make sure that we're not exacerbating that problem. Did anybody get a chance to look at that? Well, Laurie, I don't know, did you get to forward that to the board? You may have not have seen it. It was a flurry of emails today.
I have seen it. Did you email it to me?
I did, yeah. Yep. So that's something that I think for next time, if everyone would, would review that. This is one of my biggest concerns about this area, is just the vehicular safety and seeing those crash reports and the volume over there. I think there are some conflicting numbers that we have that I'd like to take into consideration. Can that be shared with the applicant as well, Laurie?
Absolutely. I find, I see it here.
No problem. I know we had a flurry of emails. There was one other question I had. I don't have any comments on this one from Chief Liver. I only could find, well, I don't know, are these comments for, I, I apologize, I don't know if it's for the subdivision or this particular project, but it would be interesting in light of some of the things that have transpired. I think Chief Liver participated in this audit, or, or at least some of his officers did. If he could comment or provide some sort of comment on anything that he thinks could be done to make this safer. I know I have a letter from twenty, it's, it's not since twenty twenty-one, and he had a couple of suggestions. Laurie, do you know if this is from, his letter from February twelve, twenty twenty-one? Is this application or the subdivision?
It must be the subdivision application, because it's not in the site plan file.
Okay, I wouldn't mind hearing from Chief Liver on anything we can do to improve that, what's hap, what he sees, what's happening here. Okay. One thing he did bring up is should a future facility have scheduled deliveries and departures, a waiting lot or area for trucks, commercials, vehicles to wait onsite should be required, as Bartlett Street is not a parking street. So Millie, that may be a little bit to what you were talking about before, where the trucks are just lining up either on the road. Oh, Millie, did you say something?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm concerned about.
Okay, or even hearing things about parking on other businesses in the area, parking on other properties, and other businesses are having to go through things like put up barricades so the trucks can't park on their grass, like, right in front of their property, right in front of their building. So we run into a lot of trouble there. And it's just really unsafe. The road is not necessarily, those roads over there aren't wide roads. Although I did see Cedar Hill is being, is that being repay, redone? Did I see that? Maybe nobody knows. I thought I saw that in the paper, that Cedar Hill's getting redone. But in any case, the roads are not wide at all. So when cars, when trucks do park like that, it's not just a a nuisance from having trucks lined up. It's dangerous to narrow the roads like that. There's not really a lot of pedestrian access, and that was also covered in this report. Just how to make it safer, especially people, they bike over there, they walk. There's a huge notable difference from when you go from Northborough to Marlborough, just the way that we, we, our prop, the, the street safety really changes as you go from one town to the other. So those are some of my concerns there, and some of the data that I was looking at. Any other comments or questions? On that one? Okay, the next one is improved access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment.
Did we, um, did we, were we told, are there doors on the back, or they're not? There are punchouts? Or there are going to be emergency exits on the back? Does anybody know?
I can pull up that elevation plan again. It's going to take me a minute. It's a big plan.
It's been a while since twenty twenty, but I want to think, there either were doors, or there are punchouts that could become doors. But I can't remember what it was.
Unfortunately, it's giving me an error message, so it's not letting me open it again for some reason.
I guess the main point I wanted to make is either way, I'd like to keep it clear of snow and outdoor storage, so if it is an emergency accessway for police or fire, that it would keep clear so that someone opening the door, someone trying to get around, could get around.
Israel, did you want to take, did you want to respond to that, or did you want me to explain how we expanded the level area surrounding the building to accommodate that?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So for fire access around the building, we did provide to the fire chief, this fire lane was one of his requests for three-sided access to the building. We also went in and re, and we widened this strip, this gray strip you see around the middle building. It's a level, stable surface. I believe that there are a few egress doors proposed at the rear for emergency purposes. We widened this for, for emergency purposes, and it, and it would be maintained. But yes, there, there, there is, will be penetrations on the rear of the building, and we, we, I, I distinctly recall going through that process with the site plan. I believe we reconfigured the building shape to add in more of, of, a better width along the rear to, to provide those required egress.
I think the last we knew is twenty-four feet.
It's pretty wide. I don't know if it's twenty-four. It might be eighteen or twenty. Twenty-four is like a standard parking aisle width for a, for a two-way parking lot. It might be, I think it's fif- fifteen, because it would be like, it would be like a one-way, basically.
I'm looking at the site plan, and I'm seeing that this area is going to be completely riprap.
No, it's, there's rip, sorry, the riprap is this slope here. What you're seeing is a crushed gravel hatch, so a level, firm, stable surface, like an engineered granular material that'll be compacted. That's typical of, of what we do around these buildings.
You might want to clarify that in the legend. Because I can see that the texture is slightly different than the riprap, but it's not defined in the legend.
Understood.
At least on, on the grading and drainage plan and the snowstorm.
We can clarify that distinction.
Okay, so there, there are doors back there for emergency. This, this is another area that I, that did concern me before. And what I would appreciate hearing Lori is really from the fire chief. Like if, if a fire is to break out on the back of this building in a densely wooded area. What is the plan to reach that fire? If you can't get back, then I, then I do appreciate the space in the back. But if you're, if the trucks can't get there, I just want to understand, like, what does that look like? I know he only, he really only seemed to comment on, like on a general high level and maybe mention the radius turn, which is a standard response. But it would be helpful to hear, like, if a fire breaks out at the back of the building in a densely forested area. How can he get to that quickly and not endanger either the, the surrounding neighborhoods? Or anybody in the, maybe stuck in the building or anything like that without getting access to, it's quite a lengthy. Area that he won't be able to reach. Care more about a plan for that.
As I recall, the fire chief issued a memo indicating that he had no concerns with the project once we provided this third. Side for access.
Yeah, I definitely recall the memo, but that's a standard response. Usually it's that, plus make sure you can do the turning of the trucks. But I'd like to understand as we're looking at what, what. What's available to him based on this building. It's unusual for, I, I don't think I've seen a plan with this. Of this magnitude that did not have access to a whole side of the building. So I don't, I'm not familiar with what would happen in that case, and I just want to understand that. And there's no way to position, I mean, it looks like the building's jammed in there, so it's, there's no way to change the position. It looks like, based on the size, there's, there's nothing more to be done in the back area.
Well, if, if I might. The, the chief's response is not a, a rote response. It was in response to concerns about access that were responded to. With the impervious area that Mr. Robinson just referred to and shown in more detail. On sheet nine of twenty six of the site plan. So it's there if, if. Planning board wants to reach out and speak to the chief, I guess that's certainly a purview. But this, his response letter as part of the initial review. Which was introduced in evidence at the land court. Certainly indicated where he stood on the process.
Sure, yeah, I think we would be responsible for reaching out. I'm not asking you to reach out, so I would just like to hear more from him. Okay, any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, now number five is reduce visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises. Residentially used or zoned. So Amy, you started to get into this a little bit.
Yeah.
So we have. You had a couple of different questions here. Have your questions been answered or are there outstanding items here?
I guess when I look at this picture, I'm thinking about buffers. So that's why I wanted to know how many feet of trees out to all the trees are. Questions probably about lighting, and that had to do with the elevation. If the neighborhood's going to be at a lower elevation. Then there'd be underneath the lights.
And if you zoom out a little bit, because now I can't see the bottom there, and you had a couple of. There we go. Okay, oops. So when I go by this property where I think I'm going by the driveway, it doesn't really look a whole lot green at all. There's really nothing there. Are you, is this, so is this, this is for just illustration here? It's sort of.
This is an aerial photograph of the site. So the green you see here, the trail you see here is taken from an aerial photograph. There's a small opening here. That's kind of blocked off with rocks and there's a dirt kind of parking lot right here. But we are using that same kind of clearing through the, the tree line as our access point.
Okay.
And there is a robust, I've stood on this, at this spot very many times. There is, there is a robust vegetative buffer at the front here. You can see the tree line in gray right there.
I actually have a picture.
Yeah, so interesting because I don't, maybe I wonder if I'm looking at it when I place them.
You could be looking in a different location.
You want me to bring up my picture or no?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, let's see if I bring up the right picture. I have to remember the name of this. You have too many documents open. Okay, so this picture right here. Can you see my little arrow?
Yes.
This is the picture when I was sitting in that little. Pullout now that says do not park where the trucks are parking. So I think this is the path where the driveway is. Two hundred Bartlett was across the street.
Yeah, that's the spot, that's the location, yep. And you can see the trees just to the right in your, in your photo.
That's this one, a close up. I was just wondering, a lot of it is, is grassy like she was saying, but. This is probably the aqueduct here. Will these trees be coming down?
Couldn't tell you that.
So this is when you're going straight and like right here to the right was where that foundation was. And where that foundation is will be the corner of the building almost. So when you're sitting in this little lot, you'll be able to see the building right here.
That's not accurate.
Okay.
The aqueduct is on the other side of that tree. Of that green, that, the aqueduct is on the other side of that.
So this one I'm pointing at, the aqueduct's on the other side of this tree?
Yeah, you can look, you can. Gauge it by the light pole, by the utility pole as well. It's, it's approximately, and I think Dave. Can do maybe a measurement on Google Earth, but it's, it's over four hundred feet. From the edge of the roadway to the corner, the closest corner of the building.
The, the very, that's correct. The very closest, very closest point to the edge of Bartlett Street is four hundred and fifty linear feet. And you, you, you have to remember, although you're showing this picture with the driveway going straight in, that the drive bends to the right. Just past that first tree line and the building will be behind that tree line to the right of that photo.
And the parking lot will be on the left, though.
Right, but remember the parking lots like ten feet below grade, below, below that. Surface that your, your cursor to the left. It's like, there's a, there's a significant, remember that one and a half on one riprap slope leading down to the parking lot? There's a significant slope going down.
So after the aqueduct, that riprap is going to go up and then down?
It kind of ties into the existing grade and then goes down. So the aqueduct side is high, the parking lot side is low on the riprap. So the parking lot's hidden, you know, behind earth in that location.
If you're walking on the aqueduct, though, you probably would look. If you walk by it on the aqueduct, you look to your right, the parking lot would be right there.
Well, the aqueduct, remember, is like a basin in that area, right? Remember, we just went through that exercise?
Yep.
So you're, you're not seeing much from the aqueduct if you're standing in the bottom of it.
Okay.
Those side slopes, right?
There are two side slopes, but then they go back up.
Then they go back up for our crossing. And then it goes right back down. So the only high point is the crossing.
And this is the foundation, I think. On the site plan, it shows a foundation. I was assuming that was it.
That's it. Yep, that's a concrete foundation called out on the site plan, existing conditions and demolition plan, yeah.
And that's in the parking lot, but that's really not that far from here. It was like right in there.
It's, it's pretty well behind there.
That's why I think, and I don't know what anybody else thinks, like. A half an hour sidewalk, just to walk right here would give people a really good perspective.
Is, is the concern regarding visual intrusion from, I guess I'm.
The visual intrusion from the street, but also from the residents, I guess.
Right.
When I walked this the other day, I was parked right there and I was amazed at how close the aqueduct was. And how close this little foundation was, like it took me two seconds to get there. Yet this is the parking lot of the building.
Yeah, I think on the, on the graphic, maybe, you know, I think that graphic probably tells the story the best is that. And Dave. The graphic shows how much further this building sits back from Bartlett compared to the other. Similar properties along Bartlett. I know the property directly across the street is much closer to Bartlett. With no visual buffer in front. Three oh one Bartlett is much closer to the street with less of a visual buffer. This building doesn't run parallel to Bartlett. It, it runs at an angle. So really, the only way that this building would be visible from Bartlett is, especially if you're driving. In a vehicle would be through that narrow window where the driveway would be, and then you'd only catch the corner of the building.
And, and don't forget, we're proposing several layers of landscaping between Bartlett Street and the building. And it's also set down significantly. So keep that in mind, too, what you see here today as existing conditions. Will be improved upon in the proposed conditions.
I was just wondering, this is Amazon up here. I was wondering if this would be the view from the neighbors if it was up on a hill. Because you said, you know, it's up on a hill and then it goes down.
The wetlands then back up.
The, the, the elevation of the site, of the finished floor elevation and the elevation of the abutting neighbors is the same. So.
So you'd just be looking straight.
You'd be looking straight, correct, right? Through. Through, through the, through the, the conserve, the area that would be retained as restricted conservation area.
Okay. Now with the riprap, I saw in three oh one Bartlett, half of three oh one Bartlett is the really big rock riprap. And the other half is like the small rocks. I was wondering, you probably don't even know what that, so when you're walking on the aqueduct, do you see that riprap?
No.
No.
No, because remember it's down a slope. So you're, you're not, you're only going to see it from the rear of the parking lot. The slope is not anywhere near the size of that slope you're showing. We, you, we wouldn't require riprap that diameter. That's very, very large for a very large slope. We'd probably be more to the right there, that smaller diameter, light gray, yeah.
This is three oh one Bartlett. If you go down in their parking lot, Amazon's across the street. And yeah, the behind Bartlett, if you go in their parking lot, it's this big riprap. And you think it would be the small riprap.
For the slope, for our slope, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I guess my concern was when I went over there and started looking, here's the riprap on the, on the site plan. Here's the aqueduct.
Yep.
And. Up here. Oh, right here is the forty foot. No, where is it? It's up here, I think, is the forty foot front setback for the.
No, I, I don't, we don't show the front setback on the grading and drainage plans on a layout plan.
It's on the site plan, so they have.
Layout plan, regardless, what's the, what's the point with the forty foot?
Oh, the point was, if this front parcel is going to be subdivided and sold off. Then the frontage for the warehouse is riprap and parking lot, when I thought it should be. More of a buffer space. That was what I was getting at. I didn't know if actually through our bylaws, can you put a parking lot and a riprap slope? In the front setback of a parcel.
Again, the, 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 the setback is a building setback that you're referring to. It's a building setback, so within all of those front, rear and side yard setbacks, the building must be located or have a variance. We're well within the setbacks, building setback.
Yeah, I know the building's within the setback, but it doesn't matter if you fill that front setback with riprap and parking lot. I always thought the front setback was a buffer. Like just how you would want a buffer from the road, you'd want a buffer. To the building.
There was a question. Attorney to ask, do you want to comment on that in terms of zoning obligations or what, what we need to?
Oh, actually, you know what it is? Our bylaw says around the parking lot, you need a ten-foot buffer. And this ten-foot buffer is within the front setback is riprap. So that doesn't seem like a ten-foot landscape buffer, because it's going to be a. A wall of rocks, like the picture below. That's.
So Attorney to ask, is that, what are the requirements based on the bylaws for that?
I have them right here.
Madam Chair, if we were just talking about a front setback or a setback for a building. I will stand to be corrected, but I am not aware of a particular requirement about what is. Or is not allowed to be in that setback area. The parking lot, buffer for vegetation. Again. That requirement will need to be met, and if there's a specific question about the relationship between. Vegetation, buffer and riprap, I would. Say that the applicant could provide that information or point out how the plan does comply.
This is the bylaw right here. That it, it says you have to have ten feet in width around the parking lot. Sufficient density and height to provide effective screening for parked vehicles.
Okay, so for the applicant, is your, your buffer right now meeting this bylaw in your opinion? Or, or not meeting this?
There is nothing proposed on that front line. And that's the plan that's before the planning board.
This question right now is talking about the ten-foot buffer around the parking lot.
Okay, so is that part of the plan already, the ten-foot buffer or no?
It's there, but it's riprap.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
The, the front setback is actually from Bartlett Street. So the subdivision plan is, is not before the planning board right now. So you have to consider the application on the merits of the application that is before you, not the subdivision plan. So the parcel that abuts Bartlett Street is not proposed for any sort of building. And the front setback is only forty feet. So they're complying with their front setback in that front parcel. Along Bartlett Street.
In the site plans, it shows them as two separate parcels, and actually the front setback is drawn around both parcels.
But the reason for that is because the aqueduct parcel separates the two parcels. So it's impossible to join the two parcels together. So even if there is no. You know, the, the back parcel is a landlocked parcel. It has no frontage. So the project that is before the planning board includes both parcels. Because the two parcels are separated by the aqueduct. So it's impossible to join them. So the, the front setback is for the front parcel. Because that is the proposed development.
I would think that if that is allowed, then they'd have to be attached by deed. Like, how can you say there's a landlocked parcel, it has no frontage? But we're going to allow the parcel in front to be the frontage, yet there are two separate A and Rs. Like the A and R from the year two thousand only has the back parcel, and that's the one that was noted in the decision.
So when the aqueduct was originally laid out back in, gosh, I think it was the eighteen hundreds. They created a parcel for the aqueduct. So they imposed. The creation of that parcel thereby separating. A parcel into two parcels, or however many parcels there were. So like I said, it's impossible. You, you can't join the two parcels together because they're separated by the aqueduct parcel.
Right, so if they're considered one parcel, that's separated. But then they still get the. They still could sell off the front parcel, even though we're saying we're going to give them the benefit of the doubt. This is.
No, they can't. So they can never sell it off. They can't because they'd have to go to the planning board for. They can't because they'd have to go to the planning board for subdivision to create. Frontage for the rear parcel because it's a landlocked parcel. So there is another possibility, they could cre- go through the A and R process and they could divide. But they would always have to give the warehouse frontage along Bartlett Street in that scenario.
Okay, so they give frontage by the subdivision, but now their front setback. Is gone because they've sold it to somebody else.
No, because if they were doing it through the A and R process, they would still have forty feet of frontage. I mean, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage minimum along Bartlett Street. So that you'd still be counting their fr- front setback from Bartlett Street. You wouldn't be counting it from the aqueduct. Because the aqueduct isn't providing you with any frontage.
I guess it's confusing because the site plan has lines drawn on it. And it has, it shows the forty foot setback from the aqueduct.
Yeah, i- it's important to remember, though, that the aqueduct is not a roadway, so it doesn't provide frontage. So what you have to do is you have to look to the parcel that's along Bartlett Street. For your frontage. So that's where the front setback calculation comes into play.
Okay.
Bartlett Street, not the aqueduct.
All right, but on the on the site plans we have, it shows the front setback from the aqueduct.
And that's a building setback. It's not related to the frontage.
Right. But it's not from Bartlett Street. All right. We can talk about it further, but offline.
Okay, so um, for this one, then you had questions about. This is in terms of the visual intrusion. Are there other areas here, Amy, you? You had questions about the tree, so forgetting that part of it, your questions about the trees in the front. Or has that been answered for you? Or do we need, you had asked about a street view or a site visit or anything like that? Are those things? You're still.
No, if anybody else wants to do it, I wanted to do a site, yeah, I mean a sidewalk. And I also think in the decision, when they were in front of the judge, they talked about the more than four hundred feet from Bartlett Street. Preservation of existing vegetation along Bartlett Street. So I was thinking. You know, if this warehouse is allowed there, like I said before, there should be a conservation restriction that. If that's their buffer, the four hundred feet to Bartlett Street, then it should be preserved that way. Just my opinion.
Okay, um, any other board comments or questions on that one?
Sorry.
Bill has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't see you.
It's okay. Um, one thing that I was just looking at, so the picture that Amy was showing the riffraff is there. Um, uh, Mr. Robinson, is that gonna be up against the um, aqueduct? The rock that you have on that you had on there?
No, because the the aqueduct itself, which is a large subsurface, literally an aqueduct. Um, is in the depressed area. So there's a buffer that's kind of built up between that riprap. And where the actual aqueduct is, and we did actually locate the physical aqueduct using ground penetrating radar. Um, as part of this project, so we know where it is. It's right in the center of there. So no, it's it's not right up against it.
Yeah, my concern was we we've been working on trying to get a trail over the top of it and we were denied. Um, even putting crushed stone over the top of it because uh, the M W R A. They wanted access to it at all times. So I was a little concerned if you were putting that riffraff up against the side of the aqueduct, but if you're not, that's fine. Thank you.
No, and we do have approval. We did, I know you're new to the board, but we did go through rigorous approval with the M W R A.
I was actually looking at that, but your approval is only for um, an access driveway. So again, if you were putting the snow and the riffraff up against that, it wouldn't be part of what your approvals were. I have it.
But our, but that is all on our property.
Right, but it's very specific, the A M is a very specific one, access driveway. So but again, if you're not putting the riffraff up against the aqueduct, then I don't think it's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
But there is snow up against it. Do you view that as a problem?
We we just said, we just said that the aqueduct is buried in the low part of the. Of this sort of bowl that's created. So that berm is well up and above any part of the aqueduct.
Well, that berm is considered part of the aqueduct. I mean, like I said, people are looking to put crushed stone over the top. Which is the that trail that's going across. So if that part that comes down into your driveway. Is is if you're putting rock up against that's that earth that's coming down into your driveway. Then the M W R A considers that their property.
They they already reviewed and approved the project.
Again, for the access driveway. They may not be aware of this of the riffraff that's gonna be going up against the side of the dirt. The aqueduct.
Just just to clar- I'm sorry, just to clarify, we're not either storing any snow or putting any riprap. Within the M W R A um, right of way. It's all located within our lot. The only, the only uh, inner disturbance within the aqueduct will be. Where it crosses through through the point where we have the permit for. So so it's adjacent to that area, yes, it's. It's right up in that area adjacent to it, but it's not over there. It's not on that on that lot. And and in terms of snow storage, um, obviously the it's up a slight embankment. So um. Snow wouldn't be pushed over top of that embankment. As is delineated on the snow storage plan.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, and do they do they get a copy of the new plans, whatever you revised, I I guess, um? Uh, well.
We are a.
Yeah.
Yes, we haven't revised, uh, I guess we we would, the snow storage plan, we would provide to the snow storage contractor to make sure that they're not. Um, storing snow where they shouldn't be, but uh, we haven't revised any of the plans uh, that. Uh, for the site plan, um, that would need to go to the N W R A. We haven't changed the design of the crossing over the aqueduct.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so anything else for reducing visual intrusion? So Amy, you had a concern that there is not a tree line there, but you you. Based on your pictures, does that make, is does that clarify it for you or not clarify it or? Do other board members have questions about it? I'm gonna drive by, I'll drive by again, because I can see now where you're, that is where I was looking and I did not view it as being. Um, heavily vegetated, but it looks like what you're saying is it's that second row of trees, not that first piece of it. And there'd be nothing in between, sort of where there's nothing in between the next row of trees there in that line. Is that what you're saying? That that row of trees in the back that we saw is will be in front of the building?
You talking to me or them?
No, they're sorry. I guess, um, David, you had that.
Yeah, that's correct. E- exactly what you said. There's a second row of trees.
Okay. So I will drive by that. Is everyone else familiar with the site?
Mm-hmm.
Phil, have you been over there? And Laurie, I think you walked, did you walk around it as well? Okay.
Yes, I did, I did.
Okay. Um, let's see, anything else there? Okay. The um. Next one is achieve, oh wait, Amy, you had, is there is there a need for elevation in street view or that, Laurie, you found that?
No, there is no um, elevate uh, rendering. Is that what you're asking for? The rendering of the project from the street view. I did reach out to Mark and he responded in the email saying that that doesn't exist.
So there's no way to do it? Like, one lineman did it. There's no way with your computer systems to do a street view?
It may be possible to do it, it just it it it. Under the circumstances, given the discussion we just had, that the roadway entrance. Is within a currently cleared area and then moves away. Into another area and the distance, it it doesn't serve any purpose to to have that type of expenditure in this case.
All right, it would help.
Um. Okay, so. Is that some attorney, is that something we can request if the board wanted to see or there's no value in it or any opinion on that?
Madam Chair, I would say it's a request that you can make. I I don't see it as a requirement if it's not in the. Rules and regulations, and I don't believe that it is, so. Um, it's the applicant's decision to discern, to determine how helpful. That information would be, and perhaps in looking at the existing plans, there may be some other. Uh, plan sheet or set of information that would provide additional information to what's already been discussed. So that although there may not be a view, you may have a a sense of dimension, distance and scale to. Uh, predict, if you will, what the view would be.
Okay. Okay, um, any other board comments or questions? Okay, um, achieve greater consistency and compatibility with the surrounding area as to building design or scale or site design. Comments or questions on this one?
Well, I mean, I reviewed some of the um. Surrounding area, building designer scale, thinking about the scale. There was a comment in there that this project is smaller than most of the warehouses and setback four hundred feet from Bartlett Street. So I went on to the G I S. And to your west is Sturrock Brook. The houses there are three to four thousand square feet. Across the street is two hundred Bartlett, which said it was seventeen thousand square feet. A hundred and seventy Bartlett, which is twenty eight thousand square feet. FedEx is forty three thousand square feet. So I just feel the comment that was made in court. Is um, attorney Donahoe said these were the comments made in court. To say that the project is smaller than most of the warehouses, it wasn't really a valid statement.
Okay.
Sorry, um, pardon me. Um, I I point out that the building proposed here. Is smaller than the most recent building that appeared on the depiction we had up uh, before on Hayes Memorial Drive. It is smaller than three oh one Bartlett Street. Both of those lots are smaller than the lot here in question. Um, the depiction that Ms. Peretzky just showed from the site. Of the Amazon warehouse facility across the street demonstrates that simply looking at one building. That is across the street presently, isn't really the nature of the entire area. All of the discussion relative to the impact of traffic and the like suggests, as one knows pretty clearly. That Bartlett Street, Lyman Street have warehouses that are significantly larger than this on smaller lots.
I was just putting in context because it's the warehouse that's closest to the residential neighborhood. You said it's seven hundred feet. From a residence property. So to go from three thousand square foot house. To a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse is a bigger jump than going from three thousand square feet. To a seventeen thousand square foot warehouse like at two hundred Bartlett Street.
I I wouldn't disagree with the math. I disagree with the concept behind it, but I'll let that go.
Yeah, I guess the criteria just asks about scale.
Okay, um, reduce glare from headlights, reduce light trespass from luminaires onto adjacent lots or the street or light overspill into the night sky. So it sounds like. With elevation wise, it sounds like this is only, whatever the projection was, it was closer to thirty seven. It's down fifteen feet, so the there's a delta there. Um. Light, well, I guess one thing I'd be concerned about without knowing. Um, between the neighborhoods and the building itself, like, um, do you have the. Photometrics plan there by any chance with you, just to take a quick look at?
Uh, yeah, I do. Do you want me to pull that up?
Yeah, do you mind?
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah, so the lights for this project are uh, the same lights that we installed at uh, Hayes G through the woods to the east, northeast. Um, there, this is a a fo- a photo, they're fully customizable, first of all. Um, and this is a photometrics plan that shows um, basically. Light output in uh, candle feet. And it basically, um, you know, shows the limits of where the light is anticipated to be shed. Everything's focused to the center of the um. Property uh, to mitigate light spillage over the uh, property lines. Everything's directed toward towards the middle of the site.
Okay, so nothing's really going out back towards where the neighborhoods would be located?
Uh, so these are the values in foot candles. Uh, an average sight would be about one point oh. Uh, foot candles. You can see the one point oh foot candle designation here in red. That's just to achieve like minimum illumination, security lighting. Um, and then the half foot candle in blue, as you can see near the property line, we have values of zero and zero point one, which is very, very dim. And again, there is that seven hundred and five foot buffer. Um, so I think that this plan kind of shows how we. How we achieve and meet the regulations for the town with regards to lighting.
Um, one thing that happened across the street, and I'm not suggesting you plan this, but um, but a surprise. Very bright light was put up. I don't, because the trucks needed extra light or something. And I don't know, Laurie, do you know how that ever got put up without any sort of? Was that part of their plan all the while or was that, it seemed like a surprise? Do you know what light I'm talking about?
No, I'm not aware.
All right. Um, I guess suffice to say, there's no real plan, you know. You have trucks coming in or or do you, what are the hours of operation, I guess? I'll start there. Do you have a sense of what the hours of operation would be?
No, not really.
Okay, because what was happening is the trucks are coming in at night and then. All of a sudden, there are these huge glaring lights over there and it's up on the hill and it just made it, the area, it was extremely. Um, overlit and it was really distracting, even as a driver is really distracting. So um, just something I was interested in, um. Hearing any plan on what that looks like.
I I guess I'd point out, and David can certainly get into more detail, but um, my recollection is the light poles that are on the. Um, the loading dock side, for lack of a better term of the building, are are proposed to be lower than the building itself. Um, and you do have the benefit of the driveway as you see as one enters, if the concern is. Light from a headlights, it gets directed, um, obviously away from the neighborhood, it behind the shield that the building creates. Uh, relatively early as one gets right over the aqueduct, so. Yeah, that's a good point. The the building kind of acts as a light buffer as well. Um, and as Mark mentioned, these light poles are mounted at twenty feet, six inches. So significantly lower than the thirty six or thirty seven foot building we're gonna propose.
Okay.
There are a couple um, parking lot lights that are twenty seven point six feet.
There might be some that are taller, yeah. Still below the thirty seven, thirty six feet, yeah.
Right. I wonder if it'll be over the tree buffer, if the buffer, the wetlands go down before it goes back up.
Right, but as you can see, as you approach the property line, you're at zero. Right, but as you can see, as you approach the property line, you're at zero foot candles.
Yep. But underneath them, you can still see them. From a distance, like when I was at three oh one Bartlett, I actually drove out last night to look at this light. And when you're sitting in the parking lot of three oh one Bartlett, you can see the Amazon across the street because it's up higher.
Yeah, again, this this site's going to be down low, so the opposite would be true for this project.
Okay, other comments or questions on this one? Uh, okay, avoid the removal or disruption of historic, traditional or significant structures or architectural elements.
Only thing I saw was that foundation. I don't know.
Yeah, so it was very clear from the land court trial uh that there's no historical significance with that foundation. That was one of their fa- facts of finding.
Um, and one thing, Lori, I forwarded to you as well that Norm had shared um about that area. He, at the time, I wa- wa- was the dairy farm there Mills? Dairy farm, hold on.
Yeah, it was Mills.
Mills.
I actually have it right here.
If there was some, he had mentioned, um, if there is some way to, um, so just brief history of the property with the remaining stone foundation, likely the old barn foundation was once the Mills Daily Farm, and he just sent some pictures and just said, wondering if the new building or property owner could somehow be named after the earlier owners. So maybe there's some sort of naming conventions there as a a hat tip to Mills Daily Farm. I think he he had submitted that so long ago and I forgot about it, and I'm sure we all did, so I just wanted to bring that forward again.
It might, but somebody sent it along. We'll take a look at it.
Sure. Um, okay, anything else on this one? Um. Reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Nothing here. Okay, well, what I want to do, I want to make sure um it's nine fifteen, so we open it up, um allow for public comments. A couple of letters also came in to the board as well, or just actually work down. I think we only had one come in. Nope, two. We had two come in. I think one we talked about. Um, we had another email come in from Carter Brandon. I'm not sure if either, um, we had an email from John Wickstead and Carter Brandon, if either are here. Um, or we can just speak to the to what you had sent, so I will open up to public comments. Um, John Wickstead, I'm gonna, I've seen your hand up for a while, so I'm gonna allow you to talk here. Bring you on in. If you just say your name and address.
Sure, it's uh John Wickstead at Two Star Brook Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, hi.
I I had a, just a couple of quick questions if if I could, just before I I make a comment. Uh, the, you know, the the pictures that you keep showing in the building don't show the dimensions of it. How long is this building? It's about, as far as I can tell, it's about eight hundred feet. Is that correct, Mr. Lopez?
Do you mind answering?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. That sounds a bit long, longer than what I believe it to be, but we can certainly.
Mr. Robinson, you probably have a map there.
I'm just off. It's eight hundred long.
Yeah, it's eight hundred feet long, so it's longer than it is closer to the houses. So I presume you can see from one end of the building to the other. And I'll just start my comments here. But I would presume if you stood at one end of the building, you'd be able to see the other end of the building. And that's closer than it is to the residential neighborhood.
Right, but there's no.
That's clear to everybody that the length of the building is more than you are close to the houses. Now, we've had some comments about very specific criteria here. And I understand that the decision has to be made based on these very specific site plan criteria, and there's a couple of these that are particularly important. You know, I sent an email to the planning board as well as to the Conservation Commission regarding the recognized environmental um situation. If I spilled five hundred gallons of gasoline on my property and it leaked over to Steve Shaw's house, I'm sure Steve wouldn't be allowed to dig up his property and ignore the fact that I spilled chemicals all over his property. It would be my responsibility to clean it up. But I'm sure Mr. Shaw wouldn't be allowed to build a house on dirty dirt until the dirty dirt had been cleaned up. And I think that the town and the Gutierrez Corporation have an obligation to the neighbors who live in this area and to the people who use Sturrock Brook and the watershed as their groundwater protected zone to at least identify whether or not some of these chemicals from the other lot have spilled onto your property. I mean, that's just a common sense respect issue for our town. And whether or not you want to make it a legal requirement or not, I think it's an ethical requirement. And I think, given what you know about the number of VOCs that have been spilled along the Hayes Memorial area and the downwater nature, sorry, the down gradient nature of your property relative to those spills and the propensity of these VOCs, particularly TCE, to linger in groundwater for decades. I think you have an obligation to do some testing on your property to reassure the town and the neighbors that you're not digging up VOCs and TCE. I would point out that TCE is a particularly bad actor in that it's quite common in groundwater. And it's known to expose people to a six to eleven fold risk of Parkinson's disease. So this is not really hyperbole on my part. And I understand that, you know, I'm a neighbor here, and so everything I say is going to be suspect, but you know, the entire town relies on the groundwater protected zones for their backup water supply. And God forbid, we ever had to use the backup water supply. That's not the time to find out that it's been contaminated with TCE. So, you know, I would ask the Gutierrez Company to do the right thing here and do some testing on your property to make sure there aren't VOCs before you dig an eight hundred foot foundation. Secondarily, for some of the specific criteria that you have. And again, I don't want to take up all of the board's time. I know there's other people who want to make comments. The issue of building scale. You know, you are far closer, seven hundred feet to the residential neighborhood than you are to the six hundred thousand square foot warehouse that Mr. Donahue references, which is a half a mile away. You're seven hundred feet away from residential neighborhood. That's the neighborhood that you should be looking to be in scale with. Even the building across the street from you is on the order of seven times smaller than what you're proposing to put on here. Right? You are closer to that building than you are to the six hundred thousand square foot warehouse. Hell, you're closer to all of these buildings than you are to either a Dewey Pile or FedEx or three oh one Bartlett Street. I mean, you're way closer to these smaller buildings, and the issue of building scale is not to be blown off. That's, you know, that's really disingenuous. Um, the issue of light trespass and noise trespass is particularly sensitive for the people who live in this area. Yes, it's a highly vegetated area between the residential neighborhood and your building. You're absolutely correct. It's highly vegetated between April and October. And between October and April, it's not vegetated at all. So, you know, the idea that this is highly vegetated is great in the summertime. It's not so great in the wintertime. If you don't think that's an issue, come stand in my front yard and look down the road. I'm about a mile from Amazon and you can see it from my front yard. You know, the light trespass on these things is is really crazy. And if you don't believe me, just drive down the street and take a look at the warehouses up there. It's like, you know, living close to an airport. And seriously, that light map that you show is completely ridiculous. You know, I'm sure you had a light nice that I I'm sure you find that funny, Mr. Robinson, but if you lived here, you probably wouldn't. Um, you know, the light trespass issues there are are really painful. And I would say, lastly, the noise trespass is going to be even worse. You know, you've got a large parking lot that you're going to be plowing in the middle of the night. You know, the hours of operation here are particularly important for the residents. And, you know, I find it hard to believe that the Gutierrez Company would invest the kind of money needed to build this warehouse without having a prospective tenant in mind. We've been told that we have no idea what the hours of operation are going to be. We've been told we have no idea who the tenant is going to be. You know, this just opens us up to a whole lot of bad surprises. And I would ask the planning board to be sensitive to the fact that people live here. And snowplows running at three o'clock in the morning, trucks backing up at two o'clock in the morning, all of that noise is seven hundred feet away. And I would ask that the planning board seriously consider the hours of operation that they're going to allow this to occur. The last point I would make is related to safety. You know, we've got a lot of trucks already on this road. We have precedent from six hundred Bartlett Street for insisting that the trucks coming and going leave to the east and stay away from the high school and the residential neighborhoods. And I would ask that the planning board consider using the precedent on six hundred sorry, the precedent at three hundred uh three oh one Bartlett Street at this same property and restrict trucks from entering and exiting from the west. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for comments. Um, okay, I have Ann Beckstrom. I'm gonna bring you in. Hi, Ann, just your um name and address, please.
Hi, this is Ann Beckstrom at one fifty two Bartlett Street. Can you hear me all right?
Uh, yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you to Jack Wickstead for articulating, you know, all of the issues that the Bartlett Street neighbors um are concerned with, because he articulated it very well. I also wanted to just comment that when I look at the diagram that Dave Robinson had put up and that one area in front of the building, um where you're proposing to be a snow um accumulation area. That shows very clearly that you've got what appear to be full grown trees right there. And um it does seem like it would be very difficult to collect snow there if there's going to be trees right next to the building there. Um, it doesn't seem like it would be really possible to do that. Um, and then I was also going to comment on the driveway that exits onto Bartlett Street, wondering if you are intending to have signage to direct your trucks to exit towards the east or to towards Marlboro. Um, because again, we have had so many issues with the trucks coming um down towards the Bartlett and Algonquin area from Amazon that we're trying to um avoid that happening. And um I do share the concern about there not being access to the fire trucks on the back of the building, regardless of what possibly the fire chief had um stated before that he was crying with your proposal. Um, it does seem like that would be very dangerous if there ever were a forest fire back there, they wouldn't be able to get back to it. Um, and if there is going to be a neighborhood walk through or another walk through of the property with the planning board, if the um area residents could also participate in that, I would be um like to do that, like to participate in that with you. And um I guess it seems clear that, oh, I guess another question I had was in that loading dock area, is there sufficient turnaround area there for the trucks to back in and then come back out that driveway, or are they going to have to back down the driveway to to exit the loading dock area?
There's no backing down the driveway. We have a veo- vehicle tracking software that we use. We can model all different kinds of trucks. Um, their turning radii, everything like that. Uh, the basically the trucks will come in, back in and pull out and and pull out straight um down down the driveway. There's plenty of sufficient room there. That truck court is actually modeled after the three oh one and Bartlett and one fifty Hayes Memorial Drive. So there's there's no backing up of the trucks there.
Okay, um, and then lastly, um. So you you don't know, you don't know who the tenant tenant is going to be, sorry. Um, but is the vision for this or the expectation that it's only going to be one business or possibly multiple businesses?
Do you happen to know that or no, no way to tell?
It's more likely than not, um, one business.
Okay, alright, well. Um. That was really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks, Ann, for your questions. One um that I think Ann had asked, um just to reiterate, the the current plan signage at the exit, is there a current plan? There is no current plans for signage. That would be a condition for turning a certain way on the road. That's not in the current plan, is it?
I think the plan reflects a no left turn sign exiting the site.
Okay.
Uh, for trucks, I I for trucks, not not all traffic.
Right, right. Okay, great, thank you. Um, let's see, Janine C. Just your name and address.
Hi, Janine Callahan, Six Star Brook Lane. Um, so I appreciate um John and Ann calling in, not going to waste everybody's time because they basically said everything that I wanted to say. Um. My feeling is that Gutierrez is not um considering the residents. And a great point that I think Jack made is he's absolutely right. If you stand at one end of the building, you can absolutely see the other end of the building. So how is it possible that standing at the corner of the planned building and looking towards the neighbors on Sterro Brook and Jenkins, you're not going to be able to see a monstrosity of a building. And everybody keeps talking about what the building is going to look like from Bartlett Street. Honestly, I don't really care. I care about what it's going to look like from the residents who live on Sterro Brook and Jenkins. Um. I'm hoping that this is not going to be a twenty four seven facility. Um, I I think that's very unfair to the residents. Um, and in regards to the driveway um and the signage requiring trucks to make a left um and not head down towards the residential section. We all know how that goes. It doesn't work. Amazon doesn't do it. A Dewey Pile doesn't do it. Everybody that's required to to go certain ways do not follow the rules. So I don't understand why this this facility is going to be any different. And again, the residents are the ones that are taking the brunt of the problems, and we are the collateral damage in in this facility being built. So again, thank you for allowing the residents to call in, and I agree with Ann. I would love to walk the property with Gutierrez to because I mean, I, you know, looking at a site plan, it just doesn't really make sense. Um. And Jack's right, you know. Dead of winter, there's no leaves on the trees. There's no protecting us um from the noises of a of a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse. But again, thank you. Thank you for taking the time for listening.
Okay, great. Thanks, Janine. Um, Carter Brandon. Hi, Carter, you sent us an email as well. Oops, can you hear us? You're cutting up a little bit. Hmm. We really can't hear you well. You're cutting up significantly. Do you want to try to call in or we can bring you back in? I can certainly speak to some of the information you shared. Did the applicant also receive Carter's email? Lori?
Yeah. Yeah, so. You can, you can speak to some of the points from my email.
Oh, we can hear you now, Carter. So give your name and address.
Okay. In twenty two Sherwin Drive. So yeah, as I said in my email, um. My concern was that, um. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the uh the thing is, partially be within two hundred feet of Sturrock Brook. Um, which I don't I don't know what exactly the current legal regulations are, but there are um recommendations to avoid.
recommendations to avoid, um, to move 200 feet undeveloped of a tributary of that size. Um, and I, I, you know, noted in the, um, email that that would probably be beneficial to avoiding, um, water pollution, obviously, which is one of the criteria, um, but also, um, uh, the, you know, scenic views and, um, it would, I think, create, I mean, it would create a larger buffer zone between, um, the industrial warehouse and the residential area, um, which I think would relieve. And it would likely, the reasonable alterations would probably be, um, reducing the scale of the building to accommodate if, if you were to, if the planning board were to ask the applicant to, um, remain 200 feet away from the brook, that would probably reduce the size of the building or would have to reduce the size of the building. Um, and I think that would be, I think a reasonable thing that most parties who have objected to it would, um, it would maybe not make them happy, but it would at least reduce their issues with it.
Okay, great. Any other comments there?
Um, I might, I think, my, as I kind of send my email probably says it better, but, um, it's, I don't know if I'm clearly understanding the, uh, bylaws, but in my opinion, the, um, expectation of the asking to keep it 200 feet away, which would also decide that would also be more consistent with most other buildings in the area that do respect, that do not intrude into 200 feet from Sterro Brook. Um, and would be more consistent in this with the site plans of the area. And in my opinion anyways, it seems like that would be sufficient to, for the planning board to, um, withhold approval of the site plan. Um, and a reasonable, um, alterations to the site plan would likely keep people less upset with the proposal.
Oh, thank you. Um, so attorney Deneski, clarification on that. Is that, that's a Concom thing, the buffer between the river?
The, I, I didn't hear all of the comments, but I believe it was related to a river setback and that, yes, would be a conservation commission.
Okay, and that, and it is 200 feet in our, um, I'm not familiar with all the regulations. Is that, does that happen to be the correct, um, buffer?
There are various setbacks under the act and the regulations depending on the classification of the water body. It might be helpful to have, um, Mr. Robinson speak to it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so real quick, uh, what he's referring to are the 100 foot and 200 foot inner and outer riparian zones to bank, which is a flagged bank, which is typically a stream or a river. We went through rigorous permitting with conserva, that is completely a conservation issue. It's one of the resource buffers that conservation, um, protects, similar to a wetland buffer. Um, and we went through rigorous, um, permitting with conservation, which we did receive approval for. And part of what we had to do, um, with, you, you're allowed to disturb up to 10% um, of that riverfront area on your site. So we went through rigorous calculations with conservation to get that approval. I think it was in 2020, 2020. Um, so we did go through that, that permitting effort, but the Wetlands Protection Act does allow for up to 10% disturbance of that.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. Thanks for bringing that forward, Carter. You make a great point.
May I, may I? Yeah, I'll ask another comment or?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think I assumed that, you know, the applicant had gone to, I mean, this has been going on for several years now, um, and it looks like there there's a lot of conservation stuff involving the, um, party and I you for going through that process. It, it seems to be, um, something that you were, had as a priority. Um, but one of the suggestions to it is that, um, if, I, I think it, it would seem that in addition, rather than as a.
Oh, we're losing you again, Carter. Sorry, we lost you again. We can't hear you anymore. But if you, um, if you want to finish that thought via email and send it our way, we can share. Everyone will get a copy of that. And we just can't hear you anymore. So, okay, I'm going to move you back over because we can't hear you. But again, if you want to submit those comments, please do. Um, I appreciate you taking the time to take a look at that. Okay, um, Rachel Armstrong. Hi, Rachel, just your name and address.
Hi, it's Rachel Armstrong, 10 Hemlock Drive. Um, I first wanted to say that I 100% agree with, um, the residents that have called in regarding all of the concerns, the, um, groundwater, the scale, the traffic concerns. So I, I won't repeat that. My question is, uh, Mr. Donahue had said that they don't, that Gutierrez doesn't plan this to be a high-impact warehouse. How do you quantify that? And can you hold Gutierrez to that promise via a planning board condition where once they, you know, where they're held to certain, um, I guess a quantity of traffic or however you would quantify what a high-impact warehouse means versus a low-impact warehouse? And can that be a planning board condition? And then also, um, you know, continuous monitoring to make sure that they, they stay within the guidelines that they've agreed to.
Okay, so first I'm going to actually ask the attorney Deneski, based on our current bylaws, how would you delineate that?
Madam Chair, that term, either high-impact or low-impact or other type of described impact is, is not a term that's in the bylaw. The warehouse use is a permitted use. In my view, the board has and can ask for additional information, some of which you've already received by way of the traffic comments during the previous hearings as to the estimated or anticipated type of use. And there may be conditions that would be appropriate, but I think more than that, I cannot say at this point because I don't think we have sufficient information for me to advise or opine on what would be applicable or permissible in light of XYZ facts because the nature or the description of high-impact or low-impact is, is not something that is a given at this point.
Does that? Go ahead, Rachel. No, I'm sorry. So is that, is that if the, the, if the applicant is promising a low-impact warehouse, is there a way then to, when the tenant is revealed, um, to have it come before the planning board again? I mean, I, is that, is there a way to do that?
Madam Chair, again through you, under the provisions of the bylaw in the site plan review process, I would say no, based on just that distinction. And again, not having any further information other than what is proposed isn't allowed use under the bylaw.
Um, question though, if, if, if we're looking at the confines of the traffic report and the traffic report, report, you know, has X traffic, but the tenant comes in and it's a whole different level of traffic. How do we account for that? So whether you call it, regardless of what you call it, it could be the difference between high-impact, low-impact. But outside of definitions, how do you account for the way that you calculate traffic?
And I think that's the way that you would approach this and other questions. What are the impacts? Again, to use that particular word, but in a generic sense, that a level of use will create or a type of use will create within the scope of review, uh, under the nine site plan criteria.
Okay, got it. Okay, is that helpful to know, Rachel?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for bringing that up. Hey, it looks like we have one more here. Um, Dario Designs. Hi, Dario, just your name and address.
Hello, Gary O'Damar, 13 Fairway Drive, North Borough. Um, I don't live near the site, but I don't think that should really matter. Uh, I think what John Wickstead said, um, should apply to about everybody in the town. But if we look at the criteria, if we start it, I'll go backwards, number nine. It says reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. So I don't think we could be reducing the obstruction more because that whole scenic view of the 800 feet and the parking lot along the aqueduct is completely eliminating the scenic views from that public way. So that's a big deal because we're putting up a 36-foot wall and a bunch of parking spaces, uh, where once it was a beautiful scenic view of all the nature from the public way being the aqueduct. Um, second, I also agree with, you know, the, the photometric plans are great because they just show you how much light is on the site. And I understand there's no spillover allowed and that's done wonderfully. But right now, if you go to Bartlett Pond and you look at it right now, you'll see tons of lights at the warehouses. Even though the light is not shining on Bartlett Pond, it's a beautiful reflection. I think it is airport-like. Where all those lights are now reflecting off the pond. So I think the point here isn't, do we spill light off the site? But will those houses see those lights at night in the winter? And if they can assure us they won't, I think that's great. Um, there's cool ways to shield lights, but it's a hell of a way to sleep when you want to have the windows open or you want to, uh, just, you know, get some fresh air and all of a sudden all the lights are shining in and you can't sleep. So I think that's a big deal coming off the parking lot. I understand some are blocked by the buildings. These half-truths are, are kind of frustrating because the ones in the parking lot are not blocked by the building. So those lights will be seen, in my opinion, from the residential neighborhoods. Um, I also think when we talk about compatibility and surrounding area buildings, I think Jack hit that one right on the head. If you start drawing a circle around this site, 203, 400 feet, 500 feet, you'll hit 50 buildings that are 10 times smaller than this before you hit one building that's bigger. So don't sit there and play games with the three warehouses are bigger and the other 300 buildings are significantly smaller. Because that's just untrue. And the last one, which I guess most of these folks don't seem to care about is safety. You've got a high school. Unfortunately, these kids aren't the best drivers in the world. And they drive at night. Sometimes they get drunk, sometimes they do drugs. We don't like that, but it happens. And now we're going to increase that traffic. And if and when someone gets hurt, gets hurt, you know, I hope to God you guys can live with it. David may laugh again. Um, this whole thing isn't funny to the neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Dario. Okay, that looks like we don't have any additional public comments at this time. Um, Dario, is your hand up again there or is it a mistake? Did you, did you mean to put your hand back up, Dario? Oops, maybe you did. Dario, did you mean to put your hand back up?
Oh, I did.
Okay. All right, there we go. All right, that concludes public comments. Um, any additional, um, based on what we've heard, um, I think it's quarter of 10. We need to, we must do the bylaws tonight because the warrant is closing. So I want to, um, propose some next steps and, um, see if that sounds good to the board and the applicants. Um, it sounds like, um, we have a couple, what I would like to do personally is go back and listen through this hearing, um, hear, you know, digest it a little bit, think about, um, we have a draft conditions at this point. I don't, I know one, the final merger came super late today. So I personally did not get a chance to go through and look at them all. I think that draft has been changing, um, throughout the day. So I personally would like the time to listen to this hearing, look at those, look at potential conditions. Um, and just think that, think that through that a little bit, uh, before we come back again to the next hearing. Um, I, I, I do, I would hope that everybody has a chance to look at, um, that road safety audit that I shared with Lori earlier, both the board and the applicant, to be able to review that. Um, is there any interest on the applicant's part of doing some sort of walkthrough with the neighbor, have, invite neighbors to come walk through? Or is there any interest there to do that? Or no?
Not the neighborhood.
Okay, um, all right. So that's not on the table. Um, is there any interest of the board to do a site walk?
I want to do one.
Any other members?
Yep.
Okay, is that something that you would be willing to do?
Yeah, um, when you say, uh, we'll certainly allow access. When you say do, are you looking for active participation in some fashion? And I, that just becomes a question of coordinating purpose and time.
Sure. Well, I suppose we could go on our own. I would just wonder if, um, how would we know the, is it clearly labeled or the flag still there? Could we easily see the boundary? So we're in the, we know we're in the right place or?
I, I would definitely not anticipate there being almost any flags left. The, the wetland flags, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, just to help guide us. So we, I think, what it sounds like the board is trying to figure out is like, what is that view to the neighborhood right now? What does that look like? That property look like from the road when you get into it and on it and in it? What does that look like?
That's what I would like to see. Like when I stood there, where's the parking lot? Like if we could walk in with someone who'd said, okay, now you're standing in the parking lot. This is where the building is.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd be willing to meet, um, if it's all right with Israel, um, I'd be willing to meet with the board at, you know, an agreed upon time to, because I know the site really well. I know where everything's going. I know the landmarks and you're not, it's going to be tough. Uh, it's hard to just visualize what's going on out there. Uh, those flags are only meant to be out for like a couple of months. It's been probably four years since it was flagged. Um, but you know, I'd, I'd be willing to, to meet the board, whoever wants to go for another walk.
Okay, can, so offline, maybe could we set something up? I think that sounds like a majority would find that helpful. Lori, is that something you'd want to be a part of at all?
Sure, I'll tag along.
Okay, uh, does that sound, um, is there something that I missed that we need to cover or get back to or anything, um, that would help us get to the next spot we need to be in?
I have one quick question, thinking about, one of the neighbors said they'll be looking at the side of the building and a lot of these warehouses are white with the blue stripe. Are any of them painted like on the side, like a brown or a green that blends in or, or does that look even worse? I was just wondering if you're a neighbor looking at the building, is it better to see something that's like?
Well, I think something that better blends in with, you know,
Right.
nature.
Right. I just, I didn't know if that's done or if that will look crazy. It's just something I was thinking of when she was saying, you know, we have to look at it and the white is pretty bright.
Is that the current plan, white, the white with the blue strip? I don't, do we get design? I don't remember what design review we came back with. Is that the current plan for a white building?
That's what was submitted. That's what the elevation drawings are showing.
Even on just the one side that's facing the neighborhood.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, I know from, if you're on Sterro Brook Trail and you can see 301 really well and it's quite shocking from the trail and how it's changed kind of the scenic view over there.
With the, you're referring to the color, the white?
The size, the color, yep.
Okay. Okay, does that sound, um, like a good approach for next time?
Uh, we, we can certainly coordinate a time, um, and as part of that to predetermine a scope, uh, of this site visit. Uh, the applicant is going to, as we committed to revise the plans in response to the planner's comments. Um, I think most of the comments of STANTEC are in the narrative of the operation and maintenance plan, but we'll bring those in and we'll update the operation and maintenance plan, um, as we talked about earlier, uh, this evening, uh, in response to the STANTEC plan. Um, so that you'll have that in time to be able to review it before the next meeting.
Great, thank you. And actually, we didn't have to go over, that was the last on my list, Lori, I apologize, your comments. Does? Great, thank you. And actually, we didn't have to go over, that was the last on my list, Lori, I apologize, your comments. Does that satisfy what you had, um, made for your comments and recommendations?
It does.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, um, in terms of. Getting back together. I think. When's our next, our next meeting is the?
Twenty first.
Twenty first, thank you. Do we want to continue to the public hearing? We'll continue the public hearing to six P M on February twenty first. Does that work for the applicant?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to continue the public hearing to six P M on February twenty first, twenty twenty-three?
Somewhere.
Someone. Only favor, Amy?
Hi.
Lily?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Harry's an I. Okay, so we will see each other back on the twenty-first at six P M. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm curious, do you have, um? Five more minutes to stay on for just the, uh, we're starting the bylaw discussion and I just wanted you to share with the board your thoughts on the groundwater bylaw. Just in terms of, we talked about, um, sorry, um, for Bartlett, you don't have to stay on. That was, it's not related to your hearing. We're moving to bylaws, so, um, it's a separate.
You'll have to park, you have to park, not paranoia.
No problem, that's okay.
Yes, yes, madam chair, I can, I can stand.
All right, so I'm going to move out here. Okay. All right, so we are going to, um, do the, oh shoot, I gotta read the public notice, so. Um, bear with me here, I'm going to switch gears. So next we have the public hearing for the purpose of seeking public opinion on the proposed amendments. Um, to the Northborough zoning bylaw and for the public, um. Hearing notice. I was very well organized a minute ago, let's see. All right, here we go. Okay, let's see. The public hearing notice is, in accordance with M G L, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February seventh, twenty twenty-three at six twenty P M. For the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed amendments to the zoning map and the following sections of the Northborough zoning bylaw, chapter seven. Complete text of the proposed amendments and proposed zoning map is available on the planning department webpage at, uh, the northboroughmass.us. Website slash planning department. The bylaws that we will be reviewing include section seven zero two zero four zero definition, section seven zero three zero five zero site plans A two. Section seven zero three zero five zero special permit with site plan approval D one. Section seven zero five zero two zero classification of uses C four C. Section seven zero five zero two zero classification of uses J two B three. Section seven zero six zero three zero table two, table of density and dimensional regulations. Section seven zero seven zero one zero groundwater protected mobile district, section seven zero nine zero two zero site design standard C six. Sections seven zero nine zero three zero off-street parking and loading B one A. Section seven zero nine zero four zero signs B. Zoning map by rezoning the portion of one sixty-seven Main Street assessors map fifty-three parcel seventy-three and zero Main Street assessors map fifty-three parcel one fifty-five located within the residential. C R C District to Business East B E District, acceptance of M G L, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three D. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during state emergency signed into law on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended by chapter twenty-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. To participate in the public comment portions of the meeting from PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Click on the URL posted in the public hearing with the passcode information or joined by phone also included in the public hearing notice. And on the agenda and town website submitted by Kerry Martin, our chairperson. Okay, so with that, let's get started. I'm attorney asking, I know it's been a late night. I don't want to take a lot of your time. I just thought it'd be helpful to hear from the board rather than me just. Try to, um, share what I interpreted as your thoughts, um, just what we had talked about. We have a, I'm going to pull up our bylaws. Um, you, which you had reviewed, um, as well, and one of our bylaws was consideration of. The dissolution of the groundwater committee and one thing the board had talked about was, um, what sort of liability that could possibly entail, um? When it's perceived that the groundwater has a greater authority than the board itself and what that looks like. If you. Um, wouldn't mind just quickly speaking to that. I think it'd be helpful for the board to just hear that as well.
Certainly, thank you. The issue is really, uh, first of all. A policy determination of whether to have an advisory body. When. Any bylaw, in my view. Creates a review process that includes an advisory. Board or body or committee. That is responsible for reviewing applications and then make, making recommendations to the. Body that has the permit or special permit granting authority. The very existence of that will suggest that that advisory body. Is providing some particular or special experience or expertise. But. The fact of the matter will depend on who are the persons who are on that advisory body. And in some instances, there may be several or all that have particular. Experience or expertise, but in some instances, uh, depending on, uh, ability to get volunteers to serve. You may not have, uh, a high level. So it's again, not so much. The fact. Uh, of having an advisory body that might be a determining factor. But who are the persons who will serve on that body? So in a sense. There's an issue of. Is advice that might come from an advisory body available from others? Uh, in this instance, it could be available from those very boards and committees. Who currently are responsible for appointing the members of the groundwater advisory committee. And that sort of sets the table of. Continuing with. For just a completely, uh, comparison, an advisory. Body of five persons. Or an advisory body of a multiple of that by virtue of. Getting input directly from those boards and committees that would otherwise appoint. The groundwater advisory committee members. And again, to repeat what I said at the start, it is really a policy question. But. In terms of how a decision is viewed, it could have an impact again, because when you have an advisory body. That would suggest to, uh. A third party to the outside, uh, world, if you will. That that body brings some special information or experience to bear on whatever it's doing.
And one thing you had mentioned, um, that I wrote down was that the, that in that case of a third-party review, be it a courtroom or whatever the case. The recommendation carries the weight of authority because. You would assume that if there's an advisory committee, it would have that specialized expertise and knowledge, but when it does not. Um. It, where, where that puts the board in a position of.
It, it, there could be a disconnect, I guess, is, is the way to put it because. If, again, whatever the subject matter is, there's an advisory body that is. Whose membership does not necessarily have a level of expertise that's greater than the permit granting body. Then the situation you have is that. There is created a. Perception or presumption that the advisory body does have a greater level of knowledge when in fact it may not.
Got it. Okay, any questions or? Any questions on that? Okay, great. All right, um, attorney Deneski, you do not have to stay further. Um, we're, I'm going to jump into the bylaws and start at the beginning, so, um, I'm sure you don't want to. You're welcome to stay. You don't have to stay, so.
If, if, if you're all set, I'm fine, but if, if something comes up and Lori wants to text me, that's fine too.
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, thank you so much.
Good night.
Okay, great. Um, all right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start from the beginning. Um, what we'll do is we'll take a look at each bylaw and I think Lori. You were nice enough to include a rationale, which will be, I think, really helpful to put it in perspective for anyone in the public who wants to comment. Um, so they'll just have a, a better understanding of. The reason behind the bylaw. I'm just going to pull that up here. Um, after that time, after each bylaw, um, I'll ask for a public comment on each. At the close of that, we'll close the hearing and then the board will vote on each one, um, which, which ones that the board endorses to move forward. So does anyone have any questions on that process? Does that sound like the good, a good approach?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, let's see, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay, and Lori, I'm going to share one. It does say draft. This is the most, well, yes, it's two, seven, so this should be the most. Oh, no, you just put the hearing date. This isn't necessarily from two, seven. Does this look correct? Um, seven, two, twenty-three planning with town council comments, is this the correct file? Okay, great. Okay, so, um. The first. Article here. Is to see if the town will vote to amend part seven of the Northborough Town Code, Northborough zoning bylaw seven zero two zero four zero by adding the text shown below. I think, um. Bob had, uh, Fred, Bob Federico had a comment about this one, one in terms of, you know, correction required.
Yes.
New building code, yep.
So his, uh, his suggestion actually, um, just was with the rationale. So it had nothing to do with the proposed language of, uh, the definition for transient. So he just wanted to point out that in the rationale, it should reference the Massachusetts Building Code, not the International Building Code. I'm happy to make that change.
Okay, got it.
Bob's actually in the, um, he's got his hand up.
Oh, okay, sorry, I can't see everybody, um. Let's see. It's unable to move. Bob in the mix here.
I can't, I don't know how to.
Um, let's see, for when I share, I lose, um, oh, here we go, hold on, let me see participants. All right, there we go. Can you hear us, Bob? Are you there? Try that again. Oops. Bob, can you hear us? Are you there?
Working on it.
Oh, he's working on his. All right. Is he in the room with us?
Hey, how are you?
There he is. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Uh, thanks, thanks for having me on. Um, like Lori said, the, um. What we go by is the Massachusetts Building Code. Part of which is the International Building Code, but it's actually the Mass Building Code. Um, it's just a clarable thing, okay? Um. So that was the first thing I saw. Um. The other one I had. Uh, was about burying utility lines in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would recommend you remove, just remove the words. Within conduit.
Okay.
Um, you're kind of crossing into. The specific. Codes, whether it's plumbing, electrical, septage or whatever, um. You know, although virtually everything underground is in a pipe. Uh, they each have their own methods. And I think if we take those two words out and just leave it. With those two words remaining. I think you'll still be able to accomplish what you're intending to get.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, while we're on a roll, the third item that I looked at is. You're talking about not having driveways within five feet of a, uh, side property line. Um. I would recommend, um. Uh, expanded to within five feet as well. Okay, so you can't build a new driveway or you can't expand an existing driveway. To within five feet.
That makes sense.
Okay, those are the only three things I found. Um. You know, I think they're just, they're minor words, but I think they, they could mean a lot, um, down the road.
Okay.
So if you don't have any questions, I'm, I'm out.
Does anyone, so that, um, Bob doesn't have to say any questions for him necessarily?
No.
No.
Uh, if you want, you can put me back down as a, um. Uh, audience member and I'll just keep going.
Sure, no problem.
All right.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, um, we have that correction there. It's in the rationale, so, um, really this is just clarifying the definition to line it up with the code here. So, um, board members, any additional comments or questions on this one? And if I don't, I can't see everybody at the same time, so if I miss you, just give a holler, but, um. Okay. So comments from the public? Please raise your hand if you have a comment on this particular bylaw. We're going to go in order. Okay, I don't see anything there. Okay, the next part is the zoning bylaw, section seven zero two zero four zero. So what we would do here is we delete the text shown below and strike through and add the text below that's underlined. And for this particular article related to temporary structure, the rationale is again clarifying the definition, so it's in line with the code. Um. You can see here, uh, certificate of zoning compliance is an occupancy permit where zoning compliance is built in. The town does not issue zoning compliance certificates on a standalone basis. So that's the rationale before that, by that. Any board comments on this one? Okay, any public comments on this one? Okay. Next one, we have, um, section seven zero two zero four zero. And by the way, for anyone, um, who doesn't have a zoning bylaw book on their desk at home, there is a copy of the zoning bylaws posted on the Northborough website. So if you ever want to look at them or follow along, that's where you'd find the zoning bylaws. Um, for this particular one, um, is related to structures. So that's, I want to make sure everyone can see both parts of it. So the rationale for this amendment, it just again clarifies the zoning definition, so consistent with building code. Um, regarding exemptions for the requirement of a building permit. So this is just getting our, um. Definition, our, excuse me, yes, our zoning definitions in line here. Any comments from board members on this one? Okay, any comments from the public? Oh geez, do I have a, oh, Lisa, I'm sorry, I missed. I missed, uh, I'm sorry if you had it up earlier. I'm not sure. I'm going to allow you to talk here and. If I missed you for a previous bylaw, that's okay. Hi Lisa, just your name and address?
Thirteen Maple, um, actually just two, this one and then the one before I was asking about the, um, temporary signage.
Sure, okay, so do you have one for this one, structure?
Yeah, the, the, just the fast question that is all they're doing is re, re, making the height, uh, another foot higher so that you don't have to. You don't have to go before planning, uh, before permit, correct? So it's six feet, now they're saying seven feet.
Let's see. I think, yes, so it looks like that's up so that it's in line with the building code. I don't know. Lori, do you want to, is there any other reason for this one or is it a building code issue?
Um, Bob had, uh, suggested this change, so I am assuming the rationale he provided is he wanted consistency with the building code.
Okay, Bob, I see your hands up. Is that the, the premise of this one here?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, the building code. Few years ago now changed, um. The, um, permit requirements of fences from six feet to seven feet. Uh, ostensibly because typically when you buy a five or six-foot section of fence. At the home store, by the time you get it installed, it's, it's more like seven feet. So the building code changed the sign requirement is that the, um, uh, fence requirement. To seven feet. So all we're doing here is, uh, making the zoning code agree with the building code.
Okay, Lisa, does that answer your question for that one? Okay, and you had one, uh, the previous one you said, I'm sorry, I missed you, um, your name is at the top, so I didn't see your hand there. The temporary structure?
Yes, it says temporary signs or other temporary outdoor advertising shall be in accordance with section seven oh nine oh four oh.
Right, that is the town sign bylaw.
Uh, yeah, the section, but what? What's the exception? What, what is it except? Uh, yeah, the section, but what, what's the exception? What, what is it accepted to? The twelve month, a hundred and, a hundred and eighty day?
A, a, a structure, um, like tents, temporary buildings, temporary structures are fine. Okay, temporary signs or other temporary outdoor advertising, um, that is the exception. The temporary signs and the outdoor temporary advertising shall still be in accordance with the signed bylaw. So this temporary structure definition that we're massaging does not apply to the signed bylaw.
Okay, and, and that sign bylaw for temporary signage is still a thirty day thing, right?
Uh, temporary signs in the sign bylaw is fifty-six days in a calendar year.
Okay, has it always been fifty-six?
As long as I've been here, yeah.
Oh, it's temporary outdoors, probably, okay. All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
Okay, um, Carter Brennan, you have a question? And if you was a previous bylaw, that's okay.
Yeah, um, so yeah, this was for the, um. Uh, changing the, like, structure definition, um. I was just wondering if that, the change would potentially, um. Like adversely impact the town's ability to regulate fences.
What? So, so we're going to fences? Are we on the, um. The si- the six to seven?
Changing it from six to seven feet.
Okay, so the question is whether or not that would impact the towns, sorry, you're bringing up a little bit too, the ability to.
Um, regulate fences.
Okay.
Why?
Um, I, I mean, some parts of the town, some, I mean, fences could have an effect on, say, wildlife in, um. Some of the less developed parts of town, um, and there may be a reason to say someone should not build a fence that is of a certain height. As it could, um, obstruct wildlife traveling through across their property.
Uh, it's, if I may, um, this, it's, but most of his, his question was really garbled and I couldn't understand it, but. Um, in terms of the fence regulations in town overall, there's not really a lot to any kind of a fence regulation. Aside from that, it needs to be on your own property. Um, if it's less than seven feet, uh, it needs a permit. If it's more than seven feet, it does need a permit. Um, and, you know, we, we, we really don't take into account. Uh, you know, neighbors, you know, not getting along and putting up a taller fence if they want to pull a permit. Um, we don't necessarily worry that much about, uh, wildlife. Uh, one of the, uh. Requirements for, uh, fences is that it, it, it cannot, uh, create a blind spot or a visual impact. Um, and typically, we had two, uh, we had one this past year. Where a gentleman put up a fence, did not require a permit, but he put it up and it caused a big, um, uh, traffic visibility issue. So, um, I had the, uh, town DPW director and the fire, and the police chief go out. Take a look at it, agree with me. I approached the homeowner who put up the fence. He gladly took it down, um, and he actually, um, had his property surveyed, reinstall the fence according to. Uh, comfortable sightlines and distances, and the issue was solved. Um, but like I said before, there's not a lot of, um. Uh. Requirements for a fence in, in Northborough. I, I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Um, yeah, no, that, that answers my question, I guess. Um, my opinion is that perhaps the town should have more regulations regarding fences.
Well, that would be up to the planning board and a bunch of creative people to come up with a, a fence bylaw.
Great, great suggestion, Carter. Thanks so much. Okay, um, let's see. I think we're on the next one. Let me make sure we didn't miss it. Nope, that's structure. Okay, we have the, um, seven, zero, three, zero, five, zero, site plans, paragraph A two. So you can see what was added here. This proposed amendment aims to clarify that a special permit with site plan approval only applies to special permit uses. As identified in the table of uses. If a byright use, as specified in the table of uses, triggers a different type of special permit. Whether groundwater, floodplain, et cetera, then site plan approval will be performed in accordance with section seven, zero, three, zero, five, zero. A, one, or three, if the app, the applicability thresholds are met. Any board, additional board comments or questions? Okay, any public questions? And I see one here, Jack Wickstead. Question or comment from you?
Hi, it's, uh, it's John Wickstead from Two Street Brooklyn. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
So could you just explain this a little bit more clearly for me? Would this address the issue where we have sort of two parallel pathways for special site permit? I know we raised that issue at town meeting last year, and I would urge the board to raise it again. You know, this situation that we just saw with our three hour meeting on Zero Bartless Street largely stems from problems in the bylaw where it's not clear. What kind of criteria we need to apply for special permits.
So you, yeah, you hit that on the head. I think this is, um, to clear, make that clearer, and so there is that, um. More specific guidance. Laurie, do you want to add to that? Um, from your, you were the one who came in as an outsider and kind of. Looked at our bylaws and realized how jumbled some sections were.
Yeah, the, the wording in the zoning bylaws that currently exists is not clear. Because as you can see, so the additional language that I recommend that we add is the in accordance with section. Seven dash, oh, five, dash, oh, three, zero, table of uses. So the way the, uh, language is today, it pretty much, um, implies that anytime you're, you're looking for a special permit. Then you look at the criteria, the approval of the decision criteria for special permit with site plan approval. But that's not correct, because the special permit with site plan approval criteria. Uh, pertains to the use itself. Oh, sorry about that. So when you have a byright use, um, the use is not a question. Uh, the town in the zoning bylaws has stated that this is a use that's going to be acceptable for this particular district. And, uh, there's no further, um, relief needed. So when you have site plan approval, you're not approving the use. What you're approving is essentially the, the proposed development plan. So you're ensuring that the development plan complies with the rules and regulations and the zoning bylaws. And if it does comply, then it's not a discretionary permit. It has to be approved.
Does that help to answer the question, Jack?
Yeah, that does. Um, it helps to answer the question. I guess I would say also, like. You know, I'm sure you guys have had the town council review all this stuff, but, you know, just figuring out, again, like, I'm not an attorney and I don't. You know, you guys clearly understand the zoning bylaws far better than I ever will. Um, but, you know, having some way to stop this process from happening whereby, you know, there's multiple ways to get a special permit through town. Is, is really problematic, and I appreciate that for that you guys are going to try and block that. You know, that hole in the bylaws, because it's, you know, it's clearly a procedural issue that, that can be exploited, you know. Not to the town's benefit.
Duly noted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have another question here, um, Lisa Muselli.
Hi, hi, Lisa Muselli, thirteen Maple. Uh, two questions on this. What happens when the use, when a use variance is applied? And, and does this make the special granting permit authority one or two different authorities?
Good question. That's a tough one this late at night. Laurie, do you, so if you get a variant, go ahead, Ben.
So if you have a variance, then, uh, if you meet the triggers for site plan approval. Uh, then you would just go by the regular site plan approval criteria, decision criteria. So you wouldn't look at the special permit with site plan approval decision criteria. It wouldn't apply. Um, and then your second question, it's very late at night, so I'm having trouble remembering what it was, or if you could.
What it was? Um, does it, does it separate where there are two granting, there are two special? Adding authorities, there's, there are two. We want to make just one. Is that what this is about?
Um, no, it has nothing to do with the approval authority. Uh, so we do have something in our regulations, in our zoning bylaws already. That say that site plan approval will be performed by whoever is the special permit granting authority. So if it's the ZBA that's issuing a special permit. Then, um, the ZBA will also be the site plan approval authority. If there's no special permit necessary, and they're just applying for site plan review. Then it's the planning board that's the approval authority.
Okay, so it still gets back to then, because the zoning does carry variances, the planning board doesn't. That anything with a variance would then be going through the special permit granting authority of the ZBA.
Well, if it's a variance, then it's not a special permit. So they're completely different animals. So if it's a variance, um, it would go to the ZBA, but the site plan approval authority would be the planning board. Because there's no, uh, caveat for, um, you know, if it's a variance, then the, um. CBA would also be the site plan approval authority.
Well, okay, sounds like you said something else, but.
Wait, I did hear something. So it sounds like if there's a variance, it goes to the ZBA first, deals with the variance, then they do the site plan review with the planning board.
Correct. So it's only in a circumstance where you have a special permit. So if you have a special permit that's going to be issued by the ZBA. Then the ZBA would also be the site plan approval authority. If the special permit is going to be issued by the planning board, then the planning board is the site plan approval authority.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, the special language about. Um, the ZBA also being the site plan approval authority doesn't include, it doesn't have any reference to variances.
Does that answer your question, Lisa?
Um, yes, although then it seems as though we still have the two, the two vehicles for granting. That Jack Wickstead was hoping was only going to be one. Am I correct?
So this doesn't solve the problem of changing the SPGA. It just solves the problem of the use table and clarifying what to do based on the use. Whether it requires a special permit, so not solving the SPGA.
All right.
So the issue is that we have something called special permit with site plan approval. Uh, which is very confusing, because what type of special permits trigger the decision criteria of special permit with site plan approval? So this attacks that problem, because now we're clarifying that it's only special permits in the use table. So they're completely different issues.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, the next one we have, um, is the seven, zero, three, zero, five, zero, special permit site plan approval. Um, so this is amending it by, um, this is clarifying the rules and regulations. Um, pointing to the planning board. In this case, we do that because the ZBA has not adopted its own rules and regulations pertaining to site plan approval. Um, the ZBA agrees that the planning board rules and regs pertaining to site plan review are comprehensive and well-written. It would like to use them in their entirety. Any board questions or additional comments on this one? Okay, any public comments on this one? Okay, I don't see any at this time. Okay, the next one is zoning bylaw seven, zero, five, zero, two, zero, classification of uses, paragraph C, four, C. In this case, we are deleting the maximum gross floor, floor area of accessory dwelling units. We're removing twenty-five percent, um, and changing seven hundred square feet to eight hundred square feet. And removing the text whichever is greater. Rational for this is the purpose of the amendment is to place a reasonable size limit on accessory dwellings. As currently written, the bylaw enables a detached accessory dwelling equivalent to the size of many single family homes to be built on residential property. When existing family, single-family homes is large, can, uh, so for example, they contain a gross floor area of four thousand square feet or more. So by eliminating the maximum size allowance of twenty-five percent of this gross floor area of the existing dwelling. And setting a maximum gross floor area, eight hundred square feet, the accessory dwelling unit will be a more reasonable size and truly accessory, accessory. Or equivalent to a large one-bedroom apartment or small two-bedroom apartment. Any additional comments or questions from the board on this one? Okay, any public comments on this one? Okay, I don't see any on this one. Next one is seven, zero, five, zero, two, zero, classification of uses, paragraph J, two, B, three. In this case, we are removing, um, the text shown here crossed out. Um, let's see, hold on, let me back up here. So we're crossing out one dwelling unit per industrial establishment on the same lot. As an incidental to a permitted industrial use occupied by the owner-employee, such as a watchman's or caretaker's quarters. Okay, so I'm back on track with this one. Why is solar, oh, this just happens to be, this is, next one moving up.
Yeah, because I'm eliminating number three and trying to make solar, uh, photoback installation, installation, number three.
I'm going to challenge you to say that word again.
I could if it were earlier in the evening. Oh, little tongue tied.
Okay, so, um, here's a rationale here. So situating a dwelling unit on the same parcel as an industrial establishment is a remnant of early industrial times. When a mill owner or foreman lived adjacent to the mill to reduce commuting distance, oversee workers, and protect the mill from fire or theft. So modern conveniences such as telephones, security cameras, sprinklers, automobiles, make it unnecessary for industrialists or caretakers to live in. Or adjacent to their industrial building. So many industrial uses are incompatible with this and/or could be hazardous to residential living. So this proposed change eliminates the establishment of a new dwelling unit within or on the same parcel as a permitted industrial establishment. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public on this one? Uh, Carter Brennan. Hi, Carter.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
You can, yeah.
Okay, um, so yeah, I was a little bit confused by, so, part of the rationale for it. Um, I can understand that there's some uses that should not have housing near industrial uses, that should not have housing near them. Um, but, I mean, that's many industrial uses, not all of them. Um, and if there's, I guess, more of a procedure to determine what could or could not be compatible. Um, my biggest issue was the part where the, the reasoning that it's modern conveniences such as automobiles would make it. Unnecessary to have people, you know, live near the industrial areas. Um, I, I don't really understand why the, um, or I disagree that, you know. The planning should expect reliance on automobiles, and I feel like it should actually discourage reliance on automobiles. Throughout the planning, um, in the town as automobile-centered planning is kind of causes just sprawl and, um. Seems harmful to the town. Thanks, that's all I had to say.
Sure, okay, so just to, um, clarify though, I'm not sure if this was clear. Um, it's, it's really about having a dwelling unit on the same parcel, so it's, it's, I think that's a little bit of the distinction here. I don't know, Laurie, would you want to expand on that a little bit, or just speak to it, to put in perspective there?
Yeah, I mean, um, zoning was created about a, over a hundred years ago. For the purpose of separating out industrial uses and residential uses, because they're rarely compatible. So if there were an exception, um, you know, certainly if there were to get approved by town meeting. Um, then they can always, uh, go to the Board of Appeals and ask for a variance. Uh, for, uh, special use, but I, I, when I'm looking at the, uh, use table. At the, the various types of uses that are identified as industrial uses. I just am not seeing that a residential apartment, um, you know, within a warehouse or a trucking facility. Um, or a manufacturing facility or research and development, why that would be. Necessary to do that, and why that would be prudent to do that. But this is my rationale for, you know, the change, so certainly, um. So certainly, you know, you can.
Yeah. Um, so just to clarify too, the rationale for the people in the public. This is not going to be a part of the bylaw, so Cardi brought up a point about automobiles, a good point about that. I wasn't sure if you were worried this part would be included in the bylaw or not, so I just want to clarify. This is just a way so we can kind of translate all the zoning language into what that means in. You know, more user-friendly terms for the, you know, for residents who may not be as familiar with the language of a bylaw.
Oh, yep, uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I think I just disagree a little bit with the rationale.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Great point. Okay, any other comments on that? I don't see any. Um, okay, the next one we have is the section seven zero six zero three zero, table of density and dimensional regulations. So in this case, oh shoot, we have the dimensional chart, so I got to flip over here. Let's see. We have to stop sharing for a second. Hold on here. Okay, so dimensional chart, I'm going to bring that up. And Lori, if it doesn't look like the right one, please let me know, it is attached to the same email from the last file. So does this look right to you?
It does, yes.
Okay, so now that I have the dimensional chart up, I can't read the rationale. So Amy, do you want to take that one? Is, are you following along? Do you want to share the bylaw and the rationale for this one?
Um, okay, I'll go look for it. I don't have them up.
Oh, you don't have it up, okay.
I have it if you want me to go through it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Uh, so essentially lot coverage is defined in the zoning bylaw as the portion of the area of a lot. Which is covered by principal and accessory structures. So by adding a maximum lot coverage requirement to the residential A, the residential B, and the residential C districts. The town would be able to limit the amount of the property that can be covered by structures. So this would include a home, a garage, a barn, shed, enclosed swimming pool, et cetera. Items that would not be included within the lot coverage calculation are driveways, parking areas, blockways, uncovered patios. And uncovered swimming pools. Um, so they are considered to be either principal or accessory structures. As they are not, sorry, not considered to be structures.
Okay, any board questions or comments on this one? Any public comments or questions on this one? Oops, Lisa Mocelli? Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Mocelli thirteen Maple. Years ago, the beginning of two thousand, I had written some bylaws with a building height. Because we didn't have any. And I'm looking at Business East and I see forty-five feet. Um, I, is that three-story complete or is that three-story plus roof? And is that higher than it had been in the past?
Do you happen to know that, Lori, or no?
I'd have to look at the definition for building height, so. I can read it to you if you like. It says, building height shall be measured as the vertical distance from the average finished grade at the perimeter of the building. To the average height of the highest roof plane. Building height shall not include spires, cupolas, antennas, or similar parts of structures. Which do not enclose potential, potentially habitable floor space.
Okay, you just said which do not include potentially habitable floor space?
Correct. Which do not enclose potentially habitable floor space.
So you could not put like a third story up there? It would just be attic or whatever.
So. On forty-five feet. In most locations, that's defined as three stories. So I would imagine that in the downtown business district, that would be three stories.
So in Business East, because we're smaller in this area. I'm wondering why we couldn't put that at least down to forty and not even thirty-five feet. Because we don't have, we only have one three-story building in this Business East. And that's the dental building.
So I think, but I think for this bylaw. Will it be, I guess there'd be a change, an additional change to this bylaws, what you're suggesting?
Yes, it's suggesting bringing that height down. If you look at all the structures that we have, they're one, they're usually one-story, there may be a. I don't even know, I'm thinking where there's a two-story and that may be one thirty Maple. I mean, one thirty Maine. But three-story, the only one we had was the dental building, and I think that may have been put up before that. The, the maximum height.
Uh, White Cliffs, of course. Uh, you know, we have a proposal further on down. Uh, to rezone White Cliffs.
Yeah.
So that certainly is a tall building. And I believe that the building at the end of the hill, uh, what is that, one? Uh, East Main. That, I think that's also three stories, isn't it?
The dental?
Yeah, the dental building is the only three-story. I think White Cliffs is a, is what, is a home? And is it a difference between a residential and business, businesses, commercial?
Lori might be talking about Aluminum City, is that? Or is that downtown business?
I, I would hesitate to, to make a change that could negatively impact buildings that currently exist in the, in the district. I think maybe we should table this and think about it. Maybe for next year. Um, I. Feel kind of uncomfortable to just go ahead and do this on the fly.
That's fine, we can go on to the next.
Okay, alright, thanks for your comment there, Lisa. Um, Eric Martin, you have a comment? Oops.
Yeah, hi, uh, hello, Eric Martin, thirty-two Western Terrace. Um, I just want to, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure regarding Ms. Mocelli's comment with the building height. Um, I mean, you typically, building height codes are for fire safety, right? You know, it's, it's what the fire apparatus I can handle and such, so. Um, I, I agree with Lori's point on like. I think modifying the building code because of the buildings that we currently have is not a good idea. Where if we're trying to do some innovation in such, especially with the master plan. Breaking the maximum building size right now doesn't, if we can handle it. If the infrastructure can handle it, I think shrinking the building size might stifle innovation, so I'm concerned about that.
Okay. Good comment. It sounds like we're not going to approach that change or consider that change for this year, but that's a good comment. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, I think Carter, do you have another comment here? I can't tell if you raised your hand.
Um, yeah, I just had a curiosity question, I guess, as to why. The proposal was, it was chosen to propose having maximum lot coverage as opposed to minimum open space.
So initially, the conversation was the concern about very large structures in some of these residential areas. We were talking about duplexes, but we've also talked about other types of housing. And how there isn't. It, there's a lot of, you know, creep where there. Is mostly, a parcel is mostly taken up by structures instead of open space. So that was the intent, was to limit the size of structures. So that's what drove this lot coverage requirement. Most towns do have lot coverage requirements in almost every district. Um, some towns have minimum open space requirements. When you have a parcel of eighty thousand square feet and you're limiting all of your structures to twenty-five percent. Chances are people aren't going to pave the balance of their lot. Uh, chances are it's either going to be forest or it's going to be grass. Um, so. I think a minimum open space requirement is less of a concern in large lot districts. But I, I guess it could be applicable to the twenty thousand square foot RC district. If folks were interested in. Adopting a minimum open space requirement.
So is something in the future?
We could look at that for next year if you'd like.
Okay, that's a good, that's a great thought. Thanks for bringing that up, Carter.
Um, and I guess just, just because we're talking about possible future changes to this. But would the town consider changing its lot coverage and open space requirements for industrial areas as those have been kind of controversial?
Yeah, that's another great point. Maybe we look at this in entirety and just kind of look at where we are today. And if it still matches where, you know, whatever our master plan is, where we want to be, what we anticipate for the future. It's a great point.
There was a point like years ago, probably before you were on the board, where we were gonna have more open space in industrial. But then we never, it never went back to anything.
Okay. Right, anything else on that one, Carter?
Um, I mean, I guess, I mean, if we're just talking about this, I mean, long-term like future stuff. But in my opinion, I, I think. The town could benefit from adding more zoning districts to like. Better reflect the current situation of the town.
Yeah, it's a great point. In the past, we've considered breaking out industrial even as well to different varying levels and just trying to better align it with our current situation. So certainly something we talked about before, and I think we definitely want to keep on our radar for the future. Alright. Great, thanks so much for that. Um, looks like we have Scott Rogers. Going to bring in. Hi, Scott.
Hey, good evening. Yes, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tom Hock Truck. Just because the table's been up here for a while, and I might just not be able to see it on the screen, but footnote four. I don't see a four in the table.
Oh, okay, let's see, what's going on here with four?
And I don't know if that's left over from a previous change, you know, not a big thing, it's just I happened to notice.
Do you know what that is?
I have to look at the, um. The original table. It might just have been a typo.
Right, because there's one, or, or one of those three, no, because it's not industrial, so it doesn't even make sense. It would have to be on the industrial line.
It is, and it's also.
Industrial. I think the four should be next to the I because. Um, lot regulations that apply to industrial uses that are but residential districts. That refers to a section in the zoning code that talks about industrial uses that are but. Residential districts increases the, I believe is a setback of the minimum distance. So I believe four should be. Attached to I industrial.
I can make sure that I include that. That must have been a spritener there because I'm looking at the original table too. And the number four is also missing from that table. So probably somewhere along the line as the zoning bylaw was republished or reprinted. The four was dropped.
Okay, so we'll fix that. And, and sometimes for, for one like that, if it's just a clerical thing, is that, does that require any sort of?
I, I could put an underline under the four, just to clarify that. We're just adding the, the missing footnote.
Okay. Alright, um, thanks Scott, thanks Scott for finding that. Um, let's see. Okay, I'm going to switch back. I don't see any additional comments for that. I'm going to switch back over to the. Let's see. Here we go. Okay, so I'm going to share again. Alright, we should be back to the zoning bylaws page. Can everybody see that? I want to make sure I didn't skip anything. That was lot coverage. Okay, so next is seven zero seven dash zero one zero, groundwater protection overlay district. So this one is adding text about when a lot's partially in one groundwater protection area and partially in another area. Um, so this amendment clarifies the minimum lot size requirement for parcels and buildings straddling two or more groundwater protection areas. Um, so this is something Fred, I think you brought this forward as a fix that needed to be made just to help clarify our bylaws. Is there anything else you'd add to that, Fred? Oops, we can't hear you there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, yeah, that says it all. We were just trying to clarify what we've been doing for many years and relaying that to residents. And in reviewing it with a fresh set of eyes that Lori brought forward, it seemed like we could make it a little more clear, so that's all we're trying to do.
Okay. Any additional board comments or questions on this one? Any public comments on this one? I don't see any. The next one is for seven zero nine zero two zero. This is for site design standards, paragraph C six. This is adding utilities, and I think this is something that Bob Federico had a minor edit to. So Lori, with that edit, what will this now say? Do you happen to have utilities?
Yes. So, I'm sorry. The new language of number six, utilities. Utilities including telephone cable and electric services shall be placed below ground. So I'm going to eliminate the words within conduit.
Okay, so that will be eliminated from that line. Um, this amendment requires new construction and/or substantial non-residential additions, expansions, or reconstruction projects that trigger site plan review. To place telephone cable and electric services underground. Well, I guess we would remove that from the rationale, though it doesn't matter a whole lot. Um, any board questions or comments on this one? Okay, any public comments or questions on this one? Okay, I don't see any here. Oops, we'll check. Nope. Okay. The next bylaw is seven zero nine zero three zero, off-street parking and loading, paragraph B one C. So this is adding no driveway shall be installed. This is another one that Bob Federico had an edit to. So this new line would read, how would that read now?
So letter C would read, no driveway shall be installed, comma, or expanded to, comma, within five feet of a side lot line.
Okay, and the reason for this is the five-feet side setback requirement for driveways will provide open space for snow storage, drainage, plantings, and fencing. Are there any board comments or questions on this one? Okay, are there any public comments on this one? Okay, Carter, you have a comment or question on this one?
Um, I mean, I have a couple just questions. One is how this would impact like existing driveways.
Okay, how would, this would not be applied to existing driveways, I assume?
No, those would be grandfathered.
And, but also for, you know, a driveway that's being expanded if it's. Currently within five feet and someone wants to expand a part of that, would that also cause issues?
That would. So they, if this were changed would mean that they would not be able to expand their driveway within that five-foot setback.
Okay. Um, and then the other question is. How that might impact, say, and I don't know what the current plans of this are, but they've been talking about changes with, you know, down. But, you know, downtown and stuff, um, but um. Whether this works in, say, the. Expansion or creation of a more dense residential neighborhood, which my understanding the state is kind of encouraging towns to. Um, change their zoning to accommodate.
I, I don't expect that this will interfere with that.
Okay.
Most towns have a, a side setback requirement for driveways. Back the town that I worked in uh, for many, many years. Had a ten foot. Side setback requirement for driveways. And uh, they have a very dense downtown, so I, I don't anticipate any issues.
Um, and would this impact like common driveways that would um. Potentially be on a like side lot line or across it?
Those are um. Permitted through the planning board through a special permit process. So that would. You know, it, it has, it has the possibility of uh, being. Looked at through that permitting and waived through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Um, we also had on this um, a while back Doug Stone sent feedback to the board. I don't know if anyone remembers. It was a while ago because he commented back when we were talking about this. Um, he had a question that um, oh, just in terms of how practical this is. So if you had a driveway with a side entry garage under the property. The driveway has to swing out towards the side property line, so that way you could just get in and out. And then he suggested that given sometimes forty foot foundation lengths and fifteen foot building side setbacks. It shortens the elbow room to get in and out of the garage. So um, that, i- is there any? Consideration to this in terms of, does this impact the ability to um, have that kind of room? Do we foresee this creates a problem for people? Or is this a standard bylaw that um, we're sort of just replicating here? So I get Lori.
So the community that I worked for, um, like I said, we had a ten foot side setback for driveways. However, it was limited to the front yard setback. So once you pass the twenty five feet um. Requirement for the front yard setback, then you could go closer to. Um, the side lot line. So we could modify this to include a provision like that if you'd like. Otherwise, you would be stuck with a five foot side setback everywhere along the uh, side lot line.
Do you recommend that?
I can see the benefit when you are talking about side entry garages.
If it was a new construction, it would just make, like you're here thinking about the duplex. If it's a new construction, it would just make the building a little smaller, five feet on each side. But if it was a current driveway and they were redoing it, they would be grandfathered. So it'd be only someone who's doing a new driveway. But I'm okay either way. I was just thinking about it.
Any board thoughts on that kind of provision?
I kind of would like to keep the five foot. All around.
Okay. I like the five foot partly because of things like snow clearance and just. Um. Distance. Buffering.
Somebody be able to request some type of variance?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that solves that then. Amy, is that okay with you?
Yeah, it'd be a dimensional variance.
Okay. Um, Lisa, do you have a comment on this one? Oops, did, no, I guess not. I thought I saw your hand up. Oh, it is, okay.
It was up. I was just gonna agree with them. I don't think at this late date, we should be adding a whole lot of information.
Okay. Point taken. Thank you. Um, okay, next we have um, section seven zero nine zero four zero signs, paragraph B definitions. So this would add two definitions here, extermin- externally illuminated sign and internally illuminated sign. So the rationale is the town currently allows both, however, they're not defined in our zoning bylaw. So this just adds the meant to reflect um, current zoning. Are there any um, board questions on this one? Any public comments on this one? Um, let's see. Scott, you have something for this one?
Yeah, I just, I just didn't have the full bylaw in front of me, but looking at the uh, the numbering, uh, twelve and nineteen, is there? Um, a reason for the separation?
Lori, do you know on that one?
Um, they're in alphabetical order.
Oh, thanks, Amy. I forgot it.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure that's what they are. I don't have it actually. But we went through it much here.
All right, great. Thanks for pointing that out. Um, Carter, do you have something for this one? Let's see. Oh, shoot, did I get you in here? Oh, Cardi, you there?
Yep, hi. Um, I, this is just a really petty thing, but is there any particular reason why the A is capitalized in one of them in lowercase and the other?
Oh, no, I suppose not. Um, maybe we just keep it consistent one way or the other. I don't think that matters in terms of. Um, we can just change that, Lori, one way or the other to match when it all goes in. Okay.
Yep.
We'll match that up for our proofreaders in the audience. Thanks, Carter. Um. See. All right, let's see. Next we have the um, rezoning of one sixty seven Main Street, White Cliffs Mansion. So in this case, um, I'm gonna, I'll switch over to the map so that everyone can see it. Um, but I will read, um, it's not as simple as just crossing out text. So I'm gonna just share this. So this will see if the town will go to amend North Row zoning map by removing land located at and known as one sixty seven Main Street, as shown on the assessors map. Uh, fifty-three is parcel seventy-three and the land located at and known as zero Main Street, as shown on the assessors map fifty-three is parcel one fifty-five. This would be from the residential. C zoning district, which is also abbreviated as RC, and placing these parcels in the business E or BE zoning district. Or take any action relative thereto. So the reason, um, rationale for this. Um, rezoning White Cliffs Mansion property business east facilitates, facilitates its reuse by allowing a greater diversity of residential business. Institutional mixed uses by right and by special permit. Well, a pro- portion of the property is currently zoned businesses. Historic building is located within the residency district, which is primarily. A single family use district. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna switch over to um, the map that we have. So I think that would be helpful for people to see. I'm gonna pull that up. Oops. A little too big. Is this, who brought this one forward? Just curious. Or how was this brought? Well, is this from you, Lori, this one?
Yeah, this was my recommendation to the White Cliffs committee. Um, when we were going through the process of uh, trying to recruit folks. Who would be interested in reusing the property. Uh, well, what I realized is how limiting the zoning is. Uh, there's only a couple of different uses. Um, that the building could be under the current zoning. So either they'd have to go to the ZBA and get a use variance to allow even. The use, the long time use of an event venue. That would not be allowed under the current zoning and of course, the property has lost its grandfathering. Um, so pretty much under the current zoning. The only thing you can do is a single family home. A two family home. An assisted living establishment. A bed and breakfast. So you're just extremely limited. And then there are a couple of other uses like agricultural uses. You can do a nursing home by special permit.
Okay, board um, comments on this one? Amy.
Um, since. We don't have a commercial application coming forward for White Cliffs. I would recommend we pass over this one. Because we don't have a business use in front of us. And it would have to go to RFP again and to dispose or to pass on White Cliffs. It has to go in front of a special town meeting. So you could do the zoning change and. The handoff of the parcel at the same time.
I would agree with that.
I am concerned that under the um, existing recommendation of the Metro West. The affordable housing. Um, they are proposing for the first floor to be used as uh, event space. Which wouldn't be allowed under the current zoning without getting a variance. So there is that issue.
I think for the Metro US one, we're gonna go to a special town meeting. So couldn't it all go to the same special town meeting? Depending on how the negotiations work out. I would hate to change it to a business use before we know.
Mm-hmm.
It changes the whole site.
I think my only concern is what's the message we send by doing that, by passing this over? Right? That we're limiting what we want anyone to do to that property. So you're limiting your pool of potential buyers.
We don't real, we don't have another pool unless we go out to RFP again.
Well, but you're still limiting it. Even, I mean, this is going to, i- if it doesn't get done now, it's going to go back out to RFP. Right? But do we really want to limit the pool of potential proposals? By leaving this as a residential, residentially zoned area? Uh, I, I just, I don't see the, the financial benefit to the town in doing that.
Well, that's an interesting point, Amy, Bill. Um, but I do, it was like this when we did our first RFP process. Do we feel like that precluded anyone applying? Or do we even know? I guess we wouldn't know.
The original RFP, it said we were going to change this.
It said we would change it.
Right. That was part of the RFP.
Or, or we would move to change it. We wouldn't have been able to guarantee a change, but we would. Continue to move to change it if the R, if the proposal presented something that town was interested in.
Yeah, remember when we discussed this when Brett came to the planning board meeting and uh, we discussed. Uh, the interest in rezoning and uh, at that time you folks were on board with. Submitting this uh, to town meeting. So I, I would still recommend going forward, of course. Um, you know, if the townspeople don't want to rezone it, then they would vote it down at town meeting. Um, but it does send a message. If we don't rezone it.
Okay, in my opinion, I don't know if it does because. We said that we, I, I think in previous meetings, we said we wouldn't push it forward if it didn't match what we were trying to do. But it's like.
My concern, uh, so the Metro West proposal is an affordable housing proposal. So that would be a chapter forty B. Um, so that would be layup. So they would be exempt from zoning. Except I'm, I'm not quite sure about the hospitality use, uh, the event venue on the first floor. Uh, because obviously that's not housing. Um, so I'd have to talk to town council about that. But. The, the thing that I'm concerned about is what if the town doesn't go forward with that proposal? So what if uh, that proposal is washed out, then we're back where we started. With a property that's zoned for single family homes. And uh, you know, we don't have a plan. So we're exactly where we were six months ago.
Well, I feel like we're there because there may or may not be proposals that were. Uh, you know. Solid enough to make us change the zoning.
But again, that redevelopment of this property is a super heavy lift.
Yeah.
So um, anything that is, you know, breaking down. The impediments, I, I think would be a positive. It might make him more attracted to somebody who's interested in reusing the property.
I do have to think that there's gonna be some impact on the neighborhood around it. So that, that. Changes considerably. A number of houses all around it.
Well, yeah.
I mean, keep in mind as well, the last use of this before it was let go. Was something that normally wouldn't have been allowed in its current zoning.
There could always be a use variance because we still have that. So if someone came forward and said, I want to do a specific thing like. A catering service, you could do a use variance. Without allowing everything in commercial, then you'd have more. Control. Although actually it wouldn't fit the criteria, so that would make it hard.
But you also have control through site plan review. So you, you know, the planning board would still have a bite of the apple. Through that process. And depending upon the use, it may be a special permit use.
I think we still put, we should, in my mind, we still put this through and let the citizens decide.
Yeah.
Let them vote on it at town meeting. Right? And then we go with whatever they decide.
Hmm. Okay, well, why don't we take some comments here? I see some hands up. So um, first I have Anna Sirvideo.
Hi, Anna Sirvideo, twenty-six Stratton Way. Um, and yes, I'm gonna be very affected by this because it's my backyard. Um, and I guess what I'm confused about is that this is preserved land. And I feel like we're not supposed to be moving forward with a commercial product there. So I feel like it should stay. The town voted for it to be preserved. So I'm unclear as to why it's now gonna be commercial.
Um, so what the town approved is the um, the allocation of CPA money to acquire. The property. So if it were to be sold, a preservation restriction would be put on the property. So that hasn't, uh, of course, been done. But the goal, of course, would be to protect the historic features that are special. Um, so the preservation restriction would identify what could and could not be. Um, done with the historic building. Um, including that it can't be demolished.
I thought the town was moving forward towards preserving it, but it looked like the only thing that's really been done is the roof. And nothing's really happened to try to preserve the building.
Lack of money.
There's not money in the, from when it was purchased, that there was money allocated to update it.
Um, there's only about, I think, five thousand dollars left in the original kitty.
Hmm.
And where did all, like, what was the money all used for that was allocated?
So it was uh, used for the carrying costs of the property. So insurance, uh, utilities. I believe there were a couple of trees that fell down. That needed to be cleared. Uh, the roof was a super expensive. Um. Expense, um, let's see. There's some mold remediation, there's some.
Security.
Security, yeah.
There was a chimney on the front of the building that was beyond repair and had to have, and had, um, had to be taken down. And um, anybody's hired a brick mason lately, they don't work cheap. Their kids are going to Harvard.
Um, Anna, you, are you the same person who submitted a petition as well?
Yes, because this kind of, I wasn't really aware until a neighbor. Uh, reached out and said, are you guys, do you guys know this is happening? And then it was like, oh my God, I didn't know this was happening. And so it kind of feels like. We're very overwhelmed right now. So we've been talking to a lot of people in town, trying to. And I got um, seventy-five signatures in four days because I just started the petitions and. Tried to get them in today just to try to make voices heard.
So the, the cost estimate to um, make the building habitable is approximately ten million dollars.
And is there a way for like preservation grants or ways to try to get that money and make it a functioning? Establishment again?
There are small grants that are available. Um, so it depends on what the, the end use is going to be. So there's a, a variety. So there's a, a variety. You know, like there's a, a historic preservation grant, that's about a hundred thousand dollar cap. Um, there's a little foundation money that you can get here and there. Uh, there's tax credits, but um. In order to get the benefit from the tax credit program, it pretty much has to be owned by a private entity. So. It's, it's just a heavy lift.
No, it's like, I was looking at the twenty twenty feasibility study. And that did show that the event space made the most sense in that location. So that's why, like, all of this is confusing, that's now turning into apartments.
Yeah, so what we're doing tonight, um, just to help clarify a little bit, and I want to also make sure we acknowledge. You submitted a um. Petition, no, you submitted um, seventy-five signatures. Um, who asked the zoning change not be included at annual town meeting? And you listed the impacts of loss, your perception that, or the, the petitioner's perception, there's a loss of buffer zone. Loss of right to quiet enjoyment, loss of property value, increased traffic. And so that um. Email came to the whole board, so we received that and, and I assume everybody read that. So what, um, the piece that we're looking at isn't necessarily what goes into White Cliffs, because. That's not something this board um, is able to decide. So what we're looking at is the zoning bylaw piece, which. We proposed, this would be whether you change it from a residential C district to a business east. Um, zoning. It's not, so regardless of what we do um, with the zoning, it wouldn't change the proposal for that property, so. We wouldn't get to decide what goes in there as a, as it releases conversation. We would just have the jurisdiction right now of the zoning component of it. Um, however we want to zone now. Does that clarify that a little bit? Okay.
Yeah, I was just hoping for it not to be rezoned, to leave it as it is until the town can make a decision, because. I think there's more going on in this. People weren't realizing what was happening as much as they should have been, myself included.
Okay, um, no, it's a great point. It is really, there is a lot going on that. It gets really confusing and twisted and then. Um, I know people are concerned that this particular bylaw is related um, to the project. So um. Any other comments or questions um, as it relates to the bylaw piece of it for you? It's just pretty much your concern is with moving forward with it, period.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I would like it to wait until the town, the town has talked and like, instead of moving forward with it. Just like, hold on a minute, like.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, um, great point. Thanks so much for that and for sharing this and we all have a copy of that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Eric Martin. Oops, did I bring you in? No, I didn't. There we go. Oops, Eric Martin.
Hello, Eric Martin, thirty-two Western Terrace. Um, I'm on the other side. I, I drive past the front of White Cliffs multiple times a day, every day. And actually, for, for similar rationale, I actually agree with Mrs. Connors and uh, Mr. Litchfield where. I, 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 I think going to Business East is a great idea, because if we want to preserve that building, a. An event space is Business East. Right? So um, regardless of what it is, and, and also. Um, I, we moved here in two thousand seventeen. And I was not, we were not at that town meeting to approve it, but my neighbors are upset that the, that White Cliffs is just sitting there. And I think that going forward with redoing this and, and as, as Laurie was saying. Uh, reduce the barriers to entry, right? Th- th- there's, there was three proposals submitted. And um, regardless of how it goes with the Metro West one, uh, if it goes forward. You know, some say good, some say bad. Uh, if it doesn't though. Reducing barriers to entry is a positive thing, and even if it gets shot down, ju- just give the residents a chance to discuss that town meeting.
Okay. That's a great point. Thanks for that. Uh, Lisa Muselli.
Hi there, Lisa Muselli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, a couple of things. Uh, probably this should be a special town meeting, whatever we do with that property. Um, but the first thing and that keeps being forgotten is that in two thousand sixteen, the article forty-two. Was using CPC money to preserve the land and the building, not just the building. The land and the building. For historic um. Preservation. So it became open space. And it became a law when it was ratified when it went to the state. You can't just decide that, well, we don't like what is happening now and we're going to put something else in there. Um, are you going to pay the CPC back the two million seven? What's going to happen with the money that was given for that specific reason and taken into law? So having all this question about rezoning it and having a whole different project up there doesn't make a lot of sense. And um, and I think that the brakes should be put on, that the zoning change should not be made yet. Um, and we should do what we were supposed to do in that article, which said that the CPC was in charge of finding a viable. Preservation route. And I didn't find any minutes to that effect. That uh, they did any efforts in doing that. So it sat there for six years. Uh, and now, now we're in a rush to get rid of it because it's unsightly. Uh, I think that uh, preservation is important. I think that the land is important to preserve. And uh, I don't think that this one piece of property is going to bring in a, a great deal of uh, income for the town and certainly with the. Uh, Metro West proposition is going to bring zero. It's going to bring in zero money, it's going to cost us more money, and it makes no sense. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Lisa, for sharing that. Okay, um, Carter Brennan.
Um, yeah, I just, in kind of response to some of the earlier discussions about um, the message that passing over. The article would send, I was just kind of curious whether. People thought it would send a different message to pass over the article as opposed to voting it down. At town meeting.
Uh, that's a good question.
If the article's voted down, then it can't be brought back for two years.
Is that a risk then?
Hmm, yeah. I do just want to point out, though, that rezoning doesn't preclude preservation. And I think that there's been some, maybe some concern that just because it's rezoned doesn't mean we aren't preserving it, we can't preserve it.
It's a good point, Millie.
I have another quick comment too, not on White Cliffs, but on bringing it back for two years. In another town, Lancaster, they voted down a warehouse and then they brought it back six weeks later. And I questioned their town just because I was curious. And she said that if the planning board approves of a warrant going forward and you have a petition from. A group of people, you can bring it back. They said they didn't have to wait two years.
It's my understanding that if you bring forth an article, a zoning article. And it gets denied at town meeting, then. If, if you want to submit it again for consideration exactly as it was originally proposed. You have to wait two years. If you want to modify the zoning, so say. You know, the decision was, well, we're not going to do Business East, we're going to zone it downtown business. Then you can do that.
No, I was very, I knew that, because we've always said that here and I asked her point blank. I said, did you change the wording? And she said. Word for word. She said, I can show it, I'll send it to you later. Because she said as long as the planning board approved the article. They did a special town meeting and it went forward and they, it approved it. So it'd be interesting to see what the attorney general does.
So, but then it does bring up a good, a, a, a point about risk. So if we bring this forward to town meeting, it's a very, it's a highly sensitive topic. And it gets shot down. And then we actually do get a proposal that does require Business East. We have no option to change that zoning for two years to Business East.
Right, but it would get zoned, it would get shot down. Either way, it would get shot down after the proposal was made. By the town.
But if somebody had it connected to a proposal versus like a random zoning decision. Does it matter? Like, if you come to town meeting, a special town meeting with a full package, here's the proposal, here's the zoning that's required to make it happen. Does that make it more palatable versus like, you don't know what the plan is, but here's our zoning. That's going to come, you know, cart before the horse a little bit, or whatever the saying is. And it gets shot down because nobody understands what's happening. It just sounds like a confusing mess. And then we're stuck. I don't know.
So the, the goal here is to find an occupant for the White Cliffs mansion. So that's the goal. Currently, the way it's zoned. There pretty much is no occupants. There's, there's no hope of getting. A use in the building, because unless. You know, some millionaire comes in or possibly a billionaire who wants to fix up this building. And make it a single family home. I, I just don't see, when you look at the allowable uses in the RC district. You know, possibly somebody would want to turn it into a bed and breakfast, but. The margins are just so small. That it doesn't have the carrying capacity for the ten million dollar spend to fix up the building. So if it's rezoned for business, then there's a whole bunch of uses. That are possible, including an event venue. Or restaurants. So the chance that the building is going to be occupied, that it's going to be redeveloped, is much greater with the rezoning. Than the way it is currently zoned.
Whether or not that makes sense, it won't matter because people vote on emotion with this building. There's a visceral reaction to the White Cliffs building. So you could say that till you blew in the face. It doesn't mean that two hundred people won't show up with the intention to vote that down, period. So I just think it's something we need to be mindful of. It's the way town meeting works and we've seen it happen over and over again.
Question for you, i- if it gets voted down in town meeting. Can it still be brought forward with the ZBA under a variance?
Yes, but in that situation, you're putting it in the hands of five people instead of putting it in the hands of the. Two hundred plus people that will attend town meeting. So. I mean, I personally, as a, a planning director. I would prefer it to be zoned properly instead of relying on use variances. Uh, to, to make it happen. Um, I think that the fact that it would need to be a use variance. Um, makes it more unattractive to. Businesses or whoever would, would be interested in purchasing the building, the property. Or even renting. Because then they have to put their fate in the hands of, of ZBA. If it's already zoned properly, then the guesswork is, is out of the equation. So they know that, okay, you know, the, the town of Northborough has said. They, they are okay with this being an event venue. So it's zoned properly. You know, when you're trying to sell a property and you're trying to market it as an event venue and it's not even allowed use. What sort of message is that?
No, I, I'm with you. Uh, that's why I'm saying, you know, even if it's, you know, I, I think it's still our job to put it forward. And let the voters decide.
Okay, well, question, um, let's stop for a second. I see there's a comment in the audience. Um, so I will accept that. But then why don't, do we have buffer to continue this hearing to the next planning board meeting so we can? Be of sound mind when we sort through the, we have this and a couple more.
Sure, you, you can continue to the next meeting.
And that'll still put us in line for the um, warrant? We don't have to worry about that?
Yes.
Okay, but I do want to um, be mindful if someone had a comment. Um, James Reed, did you have a comment you wanted to make or did you decide otherwise? I'm happy to accept one. If you want to speak. Just raise your hand and then you can speak. All right, let's see.
Hi, James. Just your name and address.
Uh, James Reed, thirty-nine Leland. Um, I do have slight concern of it changing um, zoning districts. Um, but my other question to the committee is. Now, mind you, I'm right around the corner from this establishment. How long did we? Leave it out for some sort of uh, proposals, because it seemed like it was a pretty short time period. We've. Acquired this for six years. And it seems to me, what I've read, you guys have only had it out for a proposal for about a three month time window.
Yes, so it was, it was out on the street for sixty days. However. Uh, we had a con- a consultant shaking the bull, uh, the bushes for probably thirty to forty-five days in advance of the release. But the typical process, when you put a, a bid out on the street, a request for proposals. It's usually about a three to four week turnaround time. So this is much longer than the traditional turnaround time.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Thanks so much. Um, okay, and just to clarify, the um, RFP process did not run out of the planning board. That wasn't under our jurisdiction, so. Um, that wasn't anything that we were able to run or weigh in on or any of that. Um, okay, so. Any other comments from board members? We can come back to this one. We don't have to end it here, but I just want to. Try and close by eleven thirty, so I think. We're probably getting tired and it doesn't make sense to continue on. Is there any other comment that any board members want to make? Before we motion to continue? Okay, so why don't we um. Motion to continue the public hearing to. Six PM on, or six oh five PM on February twenty-first. Does that make sense? If we have Bartlet at six, we do this at six oh five? Or should we just do them the same time?
Maybe. Six oh five works.
The only thing I'm thinking is, um, this is probably quicker than Bartlet and if we get that done first.
Yeah.
Then. We can be sure we get it finished and we're not up against the clock again.
Yeah. I think we should do this first because we're so close.
Yep. Okay.
And there might be people waiting who wanted to talk. That waited this whole time, so maybe if they come next time, it'll be six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we um, uh, motion to continue the public hearing to six PM on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. On favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
There isn't aye. Um, so we'll get, that's all set and then we have um. We don't, can we skip minutes until the next hearing? Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so let's skip minutes. Um, at some point, we need, um, town council said it was okay to book. Executive session to review our executive session minutes, so we'll have to do that at some point as well, but we don't have to solve that problem now. I just want to put it on everyone's radar. Okay, with that then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
There isn't aye.